And welcome to the March 2nd meeting of the Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Good morning, everyone. Welcome. We will take council communications first and then our consent calendar and regular agenda. If you're here to speak on a regular agenda item, just let our council clerk know and she will make sure you get a chance to speak. Doesn't look like we'll have any trouble accommodating people. We typically allow three minutes for testimony and that shouldn't be a problem today. If you're here to give council testimony, you need to give us only your name, no need for address and such. And we always maintain the rules of decorum in this chamber, which is if you agree with someone and feel like you need to show support, give them a thumbs up or a wave of the hand. And if you disagree and still feel like you need to show that, a negative hand gesture that's polite, but negative is fine. But we don't make demonstrations or applause, rounds of applause in this chamber unless it's for schoolchildren or dignitaries. And so if you're one of those, you might get special treatment. With that, there is this consent calendar and we've had one request, three requests, to pull things to the regular agenda. One of them is 197, one of them is 201, and the third is 202. Any other requests to pull items to the regular calendar? Okay. Then let's take item 189, please.
Item 189, request of Crystal Alinsky to address council regarding political favors and incumbency.
Ms. Alinsky, are you here? Okay, then let's move on to 190, please.
Request of Jonathan Collin to address council regarding city general funds to support Portland Development Commission's economic development work.
Good morning. Come on up.
Good morning, Mayor. Commissioners, my name is Jonathan Collin. I'm the senior business director for the Hispanic Chamber. And I haven't been here in a while, so I actually feel nervous amongst friends.
Don't be nervous. You are among friends.
I wanted to take this moment because I actually, as you all know, my boss, the Hispanic Chamber president, retired and we just have our new president and gave me a chance to reflect in the work that we've been doing. And as I looked up for a moment from being on the ground, I realized that Oregon has been changing, Portland has significantly, the landscape has been changing. And as we looked at the work, I've been there 13 years, a little bit over a decade and a half. And as I looked up for a moment, I realized how much of the work that has been led by this leadership has impacted our community. As our faces of our buildings and our streets change, it's so odd for me to drive on Division and see members of communities of color, small business, on those streets. And that's taking a lot of time and foresight. The NED strategy that was directed, the PDC work that's done with small technical, the small technical assistance work that's done by the seven nonprofits that support PDC and their network, who are on the ground working with these communities. It's amazing to me to be on 122nd and see a client in the front, on an anchor, anchoring a building or a shopping mall, that came out of an office in downtown Portland, or came out of an office, a provider like Nail, MISO, or Urco. The work that's being done under the Small Business Technical Assistance Program, it's very significant to our city and it's changing the landscape. When we see gentrification come, when we see new buildings go up, preparing these small businesses to be in and to stay in that game is very, very significant. You have an ask from the agency, you have a decision package that you will be voting on, and we support that. I've actually sat on the committee and looked at it from a, from a, from on-the-ground mindset of what can be done, what are we doing, and are we actually getting results? Just came back from the Central East side. B-line was here a few years ago as a success story out of one of these programs. And I just walked into their new 15,000 square feet, not a current, well, they're friends now, right? So not a current client, but it's something that you seeded and you've seen that grow over time. We have businesses on 122nd, we have businesses on Powell, we have businesses on Division, we have businesses on Williams, areas that have had a significant change, but these technical assistants are not only providing the technical assistance for the small business in all aspects, but it's also doing the management and the relationship building with landlords to take a chance with some of these businesses. It's not just getting the businesses ready, it's also convincing those landlords, those investors, those bankers, that these businesses will generate the return on investment. Return on investment's another significant one for us.
Finish up.
I know you're going to roll, but finish up. Thanks. I just wanted to say that your contribution and your support also leverages these nonprofits. So we come to the table with also some resources to support that budget.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your partnership.
Thanks.
Okay. 191, please.
191, request of Krista Stovall to address council regarding city general funds to support Portland Development Commission's traded sector economic development work.
So long, are you here? Okay, let's move on then to 192 then, please.
192, request of Sukita Ray Krimal to address council regarding city general funds to support Portland Development Commission's traded sector economic development work.
Good morning. Welcome. Come on up.
Good morning, Commissioners and Mayor. Never done this, so I'm a little nervous as well.
Ah, don't be.
So my name is Sukita Ray Krimal. I am the owner and developer of Claylin LLC, which is a Portland Development Commission's, no, it's a green traded product. And we're in the southeast Powell, Foster area, and actually looking to find some more location for our warehouse in the Lance District, and currently working with PDC and helping find that. I'm here to express my support of the Portland Development Commission's continued economic development programs. I met them in 2013 as a part of the Clean Tech Open, which is a program they sponsored, and I was able to receive a lot of support on business development and investment pitch practice and support. I continue to receive awards in that program and have continued to work with them on more introductions to more investors and even more training on how to speak with investors. So I enjoy their support. And that's about all. If you're interested in earth and flurs, this is a mini version. It's a clay-based.
Tell us about your product, yeah.
Yeah, it's a no-cement, non-toxic. It's made of local clay soils, local sands, and local straw, mixed wet, trialed out, and then after it's dry, it's sealed with drying oils, linseed oil, tung oil, pine rosin. So it's the greenest brown floor on the market, and they're very supportive of me bringing it to this city. It's the only one on the market in the states at all, and we're working here and going to grow from Portland.
That's great. Is it laid as tiles or is it a continuous surface?
No, it's a continuous slab. So it's similar to a cement floor in that way. It's just easier to bring a small slab.
Yeah, that's great.
You know, thank you for coming today. We're going to be taking up the general fund portion of the PDC budget in, in April?
Yeah.
In April. And I got a preview yesterday, and the mayor and the council have asked PDC to show a 5% cut. And there's also some ad packages, and it's, we're going to, we're going to have to really roll up our sleeves to get it right. So if you have further thoughts about the cut packages or the ad packages, we hope you'll weigh in as well, either by email or by coming to that hearing.
Okay, thank you for that, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thank you. Okay, let's take the consent calendar, please. Unless there are any other requests, we'll take the consent calendar minus those three items that I mentioned earlier.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Osman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move to the bypassed consent items. If we have staff here in some cases to discuss them. Commissioner Fish, are you ready on 197 now, or do you want to wait?
I think they were, let's...
I need to come a little later.
I think we may. I'll check with my office, Mayor.
All right, we may not have people here to, to discuss those. We could take 201 and 202, I think, because we just have someone that wants to testify on those. So why don't we take 201, please?
We can do the consent now if he's around.
Item 201, authorize Amendment 16 to intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County to provide maintenance services west of the Willamette River for fiscal year 1415.
So you wanted to testify on this? Lightning, come on up, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Lightning. I represent Lightning Watchdog, PDX. One of the reasons why I pulled this item is basically I wanted to have a more clear understanding from Multnomah County on certain areas that haven't been annexed to the city. And also having an understanding on, that I guess from my position, I think that we have a problem on maintaining a lot of the streets already from the city of Portland's position. And what I'd like to see happen is that maybe Multnomah County begins to pick up a little more from their side on this issue. And when we're discussing on paying them back on certain areas that haven't been annexed to the city as of this time, from agreements that were put together many years ago, I think there's maybe a time to look at this and say, you're showing a surplus budget, you have additional funds, you've brought in money from other areas, they had a lawsuit, they brought in 10 million, they just sold another property, brought in another 10 million. Why don't we make a proposal to Multnomah County to start picking up these costs and not ask us to reimburse them?
Actually, Lightning, that's what this does. It provides that the city gets compensated by Multnomah County for work that we do in these areas that we'd expected to annex and haven't yet.
But my question is, we've been doing that up to this point, this is just an extension of the, of the original agreement.
This allows us to bill Multnomah County for the services that we provide in those unincorporated areas.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is going in the direction that you want.
I think this is, and that's why I wanted this to be explained a little bit more, because I do agree with this ordinance and the direction it's going. And I'm surprised this hasn't been put forward many years ago, because I think these properties haven't been annexed into the city and Multnomah County should pay their share on this. So I do agree with this ordinance, and that's why I wanted to have it explained. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't you stay? Thank you, wanted to speak on the next item, but anyone else want to speak on this?
I just also had a comment that when anybody has questions about any item on the city's agenda, if you want to call the office of the commissioner who's sponsoring it the day before, you can talk to the staff person who's looked into it and maybe get some more questions answered. All, I know all of our offices have staff who are more than glad to talk through ordinances that are on the agenda to clarify any misunderstandings that may be.
If I could respond to that real fast, since that's directed toward me. I prefer to conduct my business in the council chambers, where minutes are taken and videos are taken and the public has access. So when I come in here and ask these type of questions, and I have pulled that from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, and if there's nobody to speak on it on behalf of the city, then that's okay, because you can take that position and not have somebody here. But I still want to put it on record and to conduct my business in the council chambers to where the public can hear what I'm saying, and if they want to send emails to add to that, they have a right to do that also. But if I do that behind closed doors and they have no access, then I'm really defeating the whole purpose of what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, you certainly have the right to do that. I'm just saying for those watching at home, if they too have questions and they can't come to city council at 9:30 on a Wednesday morning, they're welcome to call the offices or send an email, which also goes on the public record.
Okay, that's more than fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's take a vote on that, please.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Osman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Aye. It's good to get paid. Okay, let's take 202, please.
Authorize an intergovernmental agreement with the U.S. Department of Agriculture for Wildlife Damage and Conflict Management from January 1, 2016 to December 31, 2017.
Can I fail to ask Commissioner Novick if you needed to have anybody here on this one? I know Lightning wanted to testify.
No, we didn't.
Please, go ahead.
Yes, again, I pulled this item to have a clear understanding that when we're dealing on these type of projects for transportation and we're concerned about the wildlife, I was hoping the Audubon Society would have been here and, and taken a closer look at this, because one of the concerns I have is that on these type of projects, obviously on all the wildlife, from the birds to the beavers to the ducks and everything else, I want to make sure that when they're talking about removing them from certain locations in certain ways, I want to make sure that in these agreements that the Audubon Society or one of their representatives will be reviewing everything that they're proposing. Because I have a concern on some of the methods on removing, let's say, a beaver in a certain location, or birds, or raccoons, and I have a concern on how they're proposing to do that. And I want to make it very clear upfront, I want to see their plans on how they're going to do that. I want to see their plans on where they plan on moving them. I want to see their plans on making sure that the safety of the wildlife is the number one priority here, when you're trying to do a certain project here. And that's my biggest concern, is the safety of the wildlife and to make sure there's a good plan in place that focuses on that, and on the nests they might want to remove and various things like that, and the smaller raccoons. What are they going to do? How are they going to move them? And where are they going to take them to? And that's my biggest concern. I want to make sure there's some input from some other representatives, such as maybe the Audubon Society on this issue, and make sure that the wildlife is being protected at any and all costs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, then let's take a vote, please.
Fritz.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Osman.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, then Commissioner Fish, you have staff here now, I believe, for 197?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, let's take 197 then.
Mike, please, come on.
197, amend the regional water sales agreements with the, with Tuolleton Valley Water District and the city of Tuolleton.
Commissioner Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we received some questions about this item. I moved it to the regular agenda, and I was particularly pleased that Commissioner Fritz asked for a redline version of the agreement, which is something that came up in, in another item we had before council recently, I think it was a transportation item. And I appreciate, Commissioner Fritz, you making that request, because it is indeed much easier to show you what we've done or haven't done off a redline, and I hope that becomes the norm. I'll give you just a little bit of background. As my colleagues know, the Water Bureau serves about a million customers in the region. Of that 1 million, about, a little less than 600,000 customers are in the city of Portland. And the rest of the customers, we serve through what's called wholesale agreements with other water providers. Currently, the revenue generated from our wholesale agreements is just under $20 million this fiscal year. Now, this is a complicated area, but I'll just highlight the most important detail for purposes of Mike Stur's presentation. We sell two kinds of water to our wholesale customers. One is called guaranteed water, and that's where we have a guaranteed amount of water, we agree on the price, and that's about 97, 98% of the water that we sell. Then we have something called interruptible water, which is basically water above and beyond the guaranteed amount, that has a more complicated formula that we use to determine price. Tuolleton Valley Water District is one of our most important wholesale customers. Since 2013, we've had a dispute about how to calculate interruptible water. Thanks to mediation and negotiation, we reached an agreement. The net effect of the agreement is the matter before us actually has a nominal value, but the upside to the city and to our customers is that it opens the door for us to sell more water to TBWD. And if we sell more water, we generate more revenue. And without this settlement, they were not taking as much water as we had to offer because of the disagreement about how interruptible water should be calculated. So I hope I haven't done too much violence to this, but I want to introduce Mike Stur, who'll give you a very brief presentation.
I, of course, agree with what the Commissioner said. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. We're pleased to be talking to you about an agreement that's two years in the making. I think it's important to note that, yes, it took us two years to, to get to this point. But the reason it took two years is you have essentially three utilities who all care very much about their ratepayers. And so we each, in our own way, tried to do the best we could for, for the ratepayers. Built into our contract, our standard mediation arbitration provisions, and we chose to use a mediator when we arrived at an impasse, and we came to an acceptable agreement, which might be a model for happenings on the east coast sometimes, maybe. The amendment before council today has to do with the methodology and formulas of calculating rates for our wholesale customers. I'd thought about bringing algebra in here and putting the formulas up, but...
Please don't.
They actually make my eyes glaze over, too. To give you some background, wholesale customers, as the Commissioner said, purchase two types of water. Guaranteed water, for which we charge more because we have to provide, so it costs them a little bit more. And interruptible water, which is just what it sounds like. They don't have to purchase it and we don't have to sell it. Interruptible water is over and above the guaranteed maximum. We have the guaranteed max, or the guaranteed purchase, because that's what we use to make our capital investments on upstream of wherever the wholesaler takes off. So the guaranteed part is very important. But up there in the bull run, we have this warehouse full of water. And so selling more water is, is an extremely good thing, and that's the purpose of interruptible water. We wanted to make it possible to sell interruptible water when it worked for us and it worked for them. On average, for these two wholesale customers, interruptible water is made up about 2%, 2.5% of the water that we provide them, and 97% of the water that we provide them is guaranteed maximum. Even though that's a small amount of total water sales, we had a disagreement about calculating something called peaking factors, and you have to do the algebra to figure out what that means. But it was a legitimate disagreement, and we came to terms about that. We offered an initial shot, and they didn't care for that shot, and in the end, we came to an agreement. We used our contract provisions. These folks are more than customers, they're really our partners. Our relationship is decades long, and we hope extends decades in the future. If you want to know a little bit about the numbers, the differences in the city's initial position and the final compromise before you today is approximately $33,000 over three years on $50 million worth of sales. That's point, I did, I had a calculator to do this, it's .007%. It's a very, very small disagreement, and I think very worth it for our relationship with our customers. So now that we have reached an agreement, which both their regulating bodies have approved, I think this solves our dispute, and it will allow us in the end to sell more water, which is good for our ratepayers. I'm ready for any questions you might have.
Questions? Okay, thank you very much. Anyone want to speak on this item? Then let's, it is not an emergency ordinance, it will go to second reading. So thank you, Commissioner Fish, for bringing peace to the valley.
Thank you.
And ask this a second reading next week.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's move on to time certain then, please, which is item number, sorry, 193.
193, declare intent to initiate local improvement district formation proceedings to construct street, sidewalk, and stormwater improvements from the north of northeast Columbia Boulevard to the south of northeast Cornfoot Road in the northeast 47th Avenue Phase 1 Local Improvement District.
Thank you. Commissioner Novick.
Before Andrew and Allison proceed, I'd like to commend the Interbureau partnership between PBOT Parks and BES, relevant to this item. Thank you, Commissioner Fritz and Commissioner Fish, for collaborating with us on this potential improvement district. I look forward to continuing to partner with your offices in the future on collaborative improvement district projects like this one. We're proposing to add new sidewalks and bike lanes while reconstructing the street. Should council move forward with this LID, northeast 47th Avenue will become an attractive multimodal corridor, improving park access and ensuring families in the area have a safer path to walk on. The project will also connect Cully Residence to new job growth in Columbia Corridor, Cascade Station, and the PDX Airport. And I'll turn it over to Andrew and Allison.
Thank you, Commissioner Novick. Andrew Abbey, Local Improvement District Administrator and Project Manager. Sue, if we can switch to the presentation. So this is the northeast 47th Avenue Phase 1 LID. The reason it has Phase 1 in the title is because we have another stretch of 47th to the south that is unpaved, which at some point in the future may be a Phase 2 LID, but that's not before the council today. So this is a project map of northeast 47th Avenue. On the left, you can see the detail of the properties that will benefit from the improvements. And on the right is sort of a spider web map of the LID boundary. This is an unusual LID boundary in that it has tentacles reaching pretty far away from northeast 47th Avenue. The reason for that being is we know that we'll have some construction detours, and we needed to draw the boundary per IRS rules to allow for the expenditure of funds on traffic detours. But none of the properties to the east or west or south of northeast 47th Avenue or along Cornfoot Road will be part of this LID. It's just strictly for traffic detours. With that, before I get too deep into the weeds of the planned infrastructure improvements in the right of way, I wanted to give my colleague Allison Rouse from Parks a moment to share some perspectives on the planned Park Capital Project.
Thank you, Andrew. My name is Allison Rouse. I'm a capital project manager with the Parks Bureau. The Whittaker Pond's Nature Park contains ponds, sloughs, and natural areas that are ideal for education, birdwatching, and other nature-based recreation. Portland Parks and Recreation and its partners actively invite school groups and volunteers to the site, but access along northeast 47th is very difficult. For vehicles, there is a muddy gravel pullout, and school buses have to execute a dangerous backing maneuver in order to turn around. Meanwhile, many visitors arrive on foot, walking along the undeveloped shoulder of this busy truck route. Parks's entry improvements project, which you see on your screen, will provide off-street parking and sidewalks along our frontage. But we also sought a way to close the sidewalk gap between our frontage and northeast Columbia, which would create safer connections from the adjacent neighborhoods and from the TriMet bus stop on Columbia. Last year, we called Andrew for help, and since then, PBOT, PBOT, Parks, and BES have developed a solution to this infrastructure gap that prevents parks from building a section of half-street improvements as a part of our project that would likely have had to come out when the entire street was reconstructed. which would create safer connections from the adjacent neighborhoods and from the Trimat bus stop on Columbia. Last year, we called Andrew for help, and since then, PBOT, PBOT, Parks, and BES have developed a solution to this infrastructure gap that prevents Parks from building a section of half-street improvements as a part of our project that would likely have had to come out when the entire street was reconstructed. It will be well coordinated with our planned Entry Improvements Project and will allow both projects to be built concurrently in 2017, which will minimize the disruption for the neighbors and to the freight community. Andrew?
Thank you, Allison. So there's quite a bit of infrastructure that we're looking to rebuild here. So we're going to fully reconstruct a priority truck street, which is on the national highway system. In response to property owner concerns about access during construction, we have budgeted for a temporary signal at Alderwood and Columbia, which is within the LID boundary. And in the process of reconstructing the street, that affords the opportunity to add sidewalks on both sides of the street and bike lanes on both sides of the street, not only down to Columbia to the south, but also north to Cornfoot Road. PBOT staff have been working very hard to incorporate physically separated bike facilities into the design, so we expect that to be part of the final design. We're going to also be extending stormwater sewer and adding surface water management facilities. Just as an example of how citizens can make a real difference, I got a call from a property owner about three weeks ago saying that he didn't have sanitary sewer service. And gee, it really wouldn't make sense to build this new project and not incorporate the sanitary sewer. So I talked to BES and we are going to add a dryline sanitary sewer into the scope of the street so that we don't have to jackhammer out the concrete a couple of years after we construct it. So that'll be really good utility coordination between BES and PBOT. We're going to add bird-friendly street lighting, and as Allison mentioned, this will all be fully integrated with Whittaker Ponds.
What's a dryline sewer?
It's where you put the pipe in, but you don't necessarily have all of the laterals in place or pump stations and other, I always have to practice saying this word, appurtenances in place to actually convey all the sanitary sewage, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. So this is a financial snapshot of the LID. Keep in mind that this is not including the cost of the dryline sewer. You can see that about two-thirds of the, a little over two-thirds of the funding is from PBOT system development charge revenue. This is pretty rare to be able to devote this many resources into an underserved neighborhood like Cully. And it's made possible due to the partnership with BES and Parks, which are providing the local match that state law requires us to have for SDC-funded projects. What's very unusual about this LID is that most of the time when I bring LIDs to council, it's usually on the order of 95%, 97% financed by the property owners, about 3% to 5% financed by the city. All of these SDC resources from PBOT and the Parks and the BES contribution flips that ratio around where it's going to be about 97% funded by the city and about 3% by the property owners. Part of the reason that we did that is for several reasons. One is this is an underserved neighborhood, so we're trying to redress some of the infrastructure deficiencies of the past. But also, the properties in common ownership, almost all of them will have a future financial liability to improve Northeast 46th Avenue, Northeast Buffalo Street, and Northeast Crystal Lane. And so what we wanted to do is defer that, the bulk of the LID financial obligation, until some point in the future when those other streets are improved. And BES and Parks will not be financially contributing to those streets' improvements in the future. So we felt that this was a balanced way to fund the infrastructure over the long term. This is a section view that we came up with. It shows the travel lanes, northbound and southbound, one traveling each direction, no center turn lane. You can also see that we have physical separation there, to the extent possible, between the travel lanes and then the bikes and the sidewalks. So we're very excited to be able to rebuild 1,900 feet of street and offer that degree of physical separation. So this is a plan view. You can kind of see the bird's eye view of what this will all look like when we build it. I do want to, in the interest of transparency, say that there is a trade-off with this. And the trade-off is by putting in the bike facilities and the sidewalks, there will be no on-street parking on the street. But what we're trying to do is to make the best use of the public right-of-way to serve the most number of people, and we believe that we can do that by adding multimodal option. So this is, these are a couple of pictures I took of the pavement condition at the end of last November. You can see pretty badly alligator concrete, and if you stand out there, you'll see a truck rumbling down the street about every 45 seconds. So, you know, at some point, we knew that we'd have to rebuild the street. So just to expand on that a little bit, we actually have the three segments of 47th mapped, and they're in different levels of pavement condition. The worst segment is along the north end, and that is in the worst 0.9% pavement condition in the city. So what that means is by rebuilding this street, if we get additional resources from the voters in May to maintain our streets, instead of those dollars being used to Northeast 47th Avenue, they can be redirected to other streets in the city. I wanted to show you that picture there on the bottom. That's North Marine Drive. That was built in early 1992. As part of a periodic rating cycle, our Maintenance Bureau went out in 2014, 22 years later, and they took a picture, or they didn't take a picture, rather, they did the inspection, and they gave that pavement a perfect rating. So it needed no maintenance whatsoever after 22 years of trucks going up and down the street. So what we've done here is that we've budgeted 11.1% more money for the pavement section as opposed to a cheaper alternative. But our goal is, with 22 years after we construct Northeast 47th, that it'll look just as good as North Marine Drive. Now, talking a little bit about the neighborhood in which this project is located, Cully. They have less street and stormwater and sidewalk infrastructure as opposed to the city as a whole. I've kind of recapped those statistics there for your review. And really where that burden falls is on a really diverse segment of the population, in some cases, lower income. You can, you know, look at all those that really, those who are most burdened by the lack of infrastructure or are our more diverse elements of the city population. So one of the things PBOT's trying to do as part of its equity initiative is really to target investments where possible to serve underserved neighborhoods. And here's a real-life example of what we're trying to do. So on the left is a picture that was taken in 2010 of schoolchildren on a field trip trying to walk to Whittaker Ponds along the fog line. And then the middle picture shows Northeast Cully Boulevard prior to us building sidewalks and a cycle track, where a bomb pushing your stroller, you know, to the right of the fog line. The picture on the right is a sidewalk project that we did a couple of years ago in the 11,000 block of Northeast Prescott Street. It was a sidewalk infill project. And that's really our objective with this project, is to make the environment so comfortable for bikes and pedestrians that even a baby would feel safe being out there in the public right-of-way. And just to wrap up, here is the list of stakeholders who've sent in letters of support. I do just want to clarify for the record, I sent, I passed out a memo dated March 1st with that reference, 10 letters of support. I'm going to send an updated memo to Sue after the close of the hearing. We received an 11th letter of support, and I will be sending you an updated memo dated March 2nd reflecting that 11th letter. However, the 11th letter of support is attached to the memo. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions?
A question for Allison. I tend to lose track of all the good work that happens in Parks. Did Parks get other grants or money from Metro or elsewhere for the other parts of this project?
The Whittaker Ponds Entry Improvements Project received a grant from Metro for $420,000 to help plan the improvements just on those frontages on that site. So we're very pleased that Metro's initiative in giving us that grant and suggesting that we seek ways to close the sidewalk gap has resulted in this very large investment in this underserved neighborhood.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak on this item? I think we have some people signed up to speak. Is that right?
We have 10 people signed up to testify. Will the first three come up, please? Karina Chase, Mark Hatton, Larry Jones. They will be followed by Bob Dolphin, Corky Collier, and Alondo Simpson.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Karina Chase. I'm the new Executive Director for Columbia Slough Watershed Council, and our office is located right next to Whittaker Ponds. And you saw the photograph of what it looks like. I think it's actually a little bit worse than that even shows. There's so much truck traffic, there's pallets piled, there's huge trucks parked there. I can't even imagine having kids walking down that street. It's, it's pretty awful. So as you might know, our mission is to enhance, restore, and protect the Columbia Slough Watershed Council, or the watershed. We have around 6,000 students that we work with each year, around 2,300 citizens. We bring them to Whittaker Ponds for cycling and for paddling and for outdoor education work. And we have around 200 restoration volunteers. Sorry, I have a head cold and kind of. So our office, it's a great place to bring students, but when they come to, when they come to the office, often they're coming from the bus stop that's on Columbia. And we really need these separations from the road. And having a sidewalk and a bike lane, there will be a really significant improvement. I really support the work that the Parks have done to incorporate the improvement with the road improvement as well. This was also identified in the council's action plan for one of our top priorities. In addition to serving the people that are coming to the park to work with the council, there are plenty of people that use the route for commuting or for recreational visit to the park. I think that this is a very important project, and I hope that it will receive the support that it needs. Do you have any questions from the council, from the Watershed Council?
Just a, actually, a project question I should have asked earlier. I notice the area of improvement doesn't go all the way up to Columbia Boulevard. It's that we're not going to have a sidewalk gap there when we're done, right? You'll be able to get from the bus stop to your, to your office on pavement the whole way if you're leaving the bus stop?
That's my understanding.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take the next folks, please. Come on up.
We can do three at a time if we have the next person come up.
Come on up, and you can go ahead and get started.
Okay, great. Good morning. My name is Mark Hatton, and this is my father-in-law, Larry Jones. And we live and work on Northeast Crystal Lane, and I can't tell you how excited I am for this project. I've, I traveled the whole length of basically Northeast 47th from Columbia, north on Columbia, to almost Cornfoot every day. And I've seen the kids get off the bus and almost get hit, and I've almost hit people myself. I'm a runner and a rider. I ride to work, and I've almost been hit. It's, it's pretty scary. But actually, my father-in-law has, we were talking on our way over here tonight, or this morning, about a close call incident that he had just last night.
I'm Larry Jones. Mr. Hales, Mayor of Hales, and Commissioners, thank you for hearing us. I have lived at the corner of Northeast Crystal Lane and 47th for eight years now. And when I first moved in there, I decided that I would try to live my life without benefit of a car. And so I used my feet to bicycle on Trimat, which meant that I had to either bicycle by feet, go to Columbia Boulevard, which is almost precisely a half-mile to catch a bus, or get my bike farther. And I can tell you that in the many, many thousands of trips that I took, there was never a time that I wasn't acutely aware of the dangers of traversing that half-mile. So I only wish that this project had been accomplished 10 years ago. Only last night, I left after dark in the rain to do an errand up farther south on 42nd, and there was a large delivery van similar to the one that was in the picture earlier going north as I was going south, so I focused on him because of the narrow street to safely pass him. And right at the narrowest point of the street in terms of pedestrian access, I passed him. And just as I did so, an individual appeared out of the blue, of course, wearing all black in the dark rainy night, which is certainly common in Portland, and it scared the life I don't think I have anything else to add, Mark.
I also wanted to add, that whole area, or I should say, from Columbia to Cornfoot doesn't have any sewers. We're all on leach fields, and I'm the one that actually alerted Andrew about the idea of, instead of putting in all this, this new beautiful street and then tearing it up six months later, it just made total sense to put the sewer in beforehand. That's the dryline.
Yes, that's great.
Yeah, I just, it would have been ridiculous.
Well, thanks for working with us on this, and I'm glad you've made all those risky trips successfully and glad that we're not going to be rolling the dice anymore out there. So keep, keep being alert until we get it done, please. Good morning.
Yeah, good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Bob Dolphin, and I'm on the board of the nonprofit Columbia Slough Watershed Council. And this has been in our radar for about 20 years, this project. I mean, we've seen kids walking down that street, so I don't have a whole lot else to add, but I really want to commend the city for pulling the three bureaus together. Whoever did that and the staff really did a great job, and this project really grew to a great project, you know, the separated bike lane and sidewalk. And it's really been a great project, the, you know, the better quality street for the heavy truck traffic goes down there. So really, the city staff and whoever pulled all these bureaus together to make this happen really did a great job. So I commend the group who did that. And it'll be great to see, you know, the truck traffic, the business traffic moving at the same time, kids and bikes are going down, all down the same street. So it's a great project, and I hope you all push it forward.
Thank you. Thanks for your help. Thank you all.
The next three are Corky Collier, Alondo Simpson, Nelandah Gunasekavan. Please come up. They'll be followed by Rebecca Hamilton, Rich Gunderson, and Lauren Young.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Corky Collier, Executive Director of the Columbia Corridor Association. One of the really great things about the Columbia Corridor is the proximity of middle-wage jobs to neighborhoods. Unfortunately, the connections from those neighborhoods to those middle-wage jobs are a little bit less than what we'd like. 39% of Columbia Corridor employees live within five miles where they work. That's biking distance, but those bike connections are inferior, to say the least. The connections to Cully are even more important because Cully is one of the last bastions of middle-wage people living inside of I-205. It's a fantastic neighborhood, but they're on the cusp of being pushed out. More gentrification coming in there. And probably the most effective way to fight that is to make sure that they have good access to those middle-wage jobs, which are literally right across railroad tracks from them. This project helps do that. It gives a good bike connections, good pedestrian connections. It also brings swales. It brings great access to Whittaker Ponds, which is a jewel. If you guys haven't been out there during the summer to go paddling down to the slough, I invite you to come out and join us. But for me, the most important thing is that connection to those jobs. I think that's a good way to keep this city healthy. I do ask that you stress to staff that as we move forward with the final designs, that if we get down to some tough decisions, that there's a little bit of a stress, just a little bit of preference toward freight safety on this street. This is in a freight district, of course, and the last thing we want is for a truck to get into a swell sprawled across a bike lane. So when it comes down to it, if we have just a slight preference for that, I think that would be great. As Andrew pointed out to you, this is a bit of an odd LID in the sense that most of the money is coming from the city. Normally, it's completely the reverse. I ask that you trust Andrew on this, I think, and I suggest that you really can. If you don't know this fellow, get to know him better. He's fantastic. I mean, the city's got a lot of wonderful employees, but Andrew, in my mind, is in an elite class. And I get excited when I see him walking toward me because I know that he has a good project that he's working on. And I know, most importantly, that he really, really embraces all the problems that he encounters with the people that he's working on. All the problems that are affected by a project, he finds solutions for them. And hats off to that. So I support the project. I hope you will, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Great. Good morning, Mayor Hales and fellow members of the council. My name's Alondo Simpson. For the record, my company is City of Rose Disposal and Recycling, a local small business. And I feel like I would share a little bit of something with you today, aside from my comments that I've already shared with those who are other advocates for this particular project, as well as Mr. Andrew Abbey, who's taken a profound leadership role on this particular infrastructure improvement project. This proposed LID on Northeast 47th is definitely something I believe we should, we should, we should move forward with. Being an owner of industrial properties located and blighted in, most importantly, underserved areas, I have always been a big pessimist of LIDs. And that's primarily And that's primarily due to the magnitude and the nature of those costs that are essentially inflicted on the private property owner. As, as a small business owner, we've, we've overseen a lot of these challenges in the past in trying to make improvements to our side in order to build our capacity and scale our growth. However, the concept of entertaining LIDs have always hindered that, hindered that growth, and we've always had to take a step back and, and not really focus on that. This past December, I had the opportunity to be introduced to, to LID Administrator Andrew Abbey, and to hear about this proposed LID on Northeast 47th. And from what had started as complete doubt on my end quickly turned into a significant amount of optimism, appreciation, and support. Mr. Abbey's innovative approach to pulling together public resources from different bureaus in order to assure this historically underserved community of property owners would not have to consume the typical 95% of cost for a project. This was something that was definitely outside the box and shows true leadership on Mr. Abbey's behalf, as well as PBOT. This particular community, Colley in particular, is in dire need of infrastructure investments in order to accommodate inefficient multimodal transportation system. And these routes are going to impact the historically blighted corridor in a way in which we have never seen before. Mr. Abbey's persistent outreach approaches and ability to bring together the community, government, and private sector stakeholders are illustrations of the grassroots approaches to the shared prosperity we all envision as a city. I would like to commend the various bureaus who are all investing financially into this proposed project. I would also like to acknowledge the leadership of PBOT Director Leah Treet, but most importantly, Mr. Andrew Abbey. They are transformational leaders like him who use innovative programs, outside-the-box thinking, and amazing community outreach processes to achieve the outcomes we can all benefit and prosper from. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable City Council Members. My name is Nalana Gunesekran. I'm a family physician for Kaiser Permanente at the Interstate Medical Building in Portland. I'm also a mother of three school-aged children and a longtime resident of northeast Portland. I have a background in community and family medicine. For the past several years, my primary care practice has been with Kaiser Permanente in Portland. I have also previously worked in community health clinics in Washington DC, Baltimore, as well as in Gresham through Multnomah County Health Department. I have always enjoyed working with diverse communities. I care for patients and families of all ages, stages, genders, cultures, and socioeconomic backgrounds. My mission has always been to advocate for my patients' health, both in the immediate day-to-day needs, as well as for their long-term preventative care that can impact their future lives. I feel passionate about my job because I know the impact that good health has on individuals, as well as on families and the community at large. There is an Arabian proverb that says, "He who has health has hope, and he who has hope has everything." As a family physician, as well as a mother who works and lives in this city, I am here to advocate for both the health and the hopes of our patients, who will benefit from this proposal put forth by the Portland Bureau of Transportation to reconstruct Northeast 47th Avenue between Columbia and Cornfoot. Kaiser Interstate where I practice is the primary care clinic for many residents of the northeast Portland area. Many of our members come to our clinic due to its central location in the city. Many drive as well as use the max train and the bus to get to our interstate campus. We also have members who bike or walk to our clinic from nearby areas. My patients range in age from two weeks old to a glorious 101. I have, we have significant patients who have financial resources and long-term economic security, but we also have others who unfortunately do not have financial resources, and they may struggle to make their ends meet day-to-day. We have patients who have lived in our city for years, but we also have newcomers brought here, as so many do, yearning for the promise they hope to find in Portland. Kaiser Permanente's goal for all of these patients is to bring the promise of good health into their everyday lives. We aim to educate our patients on the small changes in behaviors that are easy but effective to prevent and control chronic conditions like high blood pressure, diabetes, asthma, and depression. We hope to educate and guide healthy habits that affect how one eats breakfast, or how one gets to work, or exercises, or even, even has fun. When we talk about putting prevention into practice, we are talking about these very basic measures. These health practices in individuals are what define and affect change to bring about healthy and productive communities. This is why Kaiser invests in many different local community organizations, as well as community programs like Sunday Parkway's. From experience, we know that the small changes that we promote on an individual level will determine the success of change on a much greater scale. We know that we will all thrive together only when our city and our citizens thrive first. Therefore, I would like to advocate on behalf of myself and Kaiser Permanente for the reconstruction of Northeast 47th Avenue between Columbia and Cornfoot to allow for sidewalks and bike lanes to enable safe and healthy transportation options for adults and children alike. I have personally driven on this road to the airport in the past. This busy street gives access not just to the airport, but also to businesses nearby, including retail locations, as well as recreational and educational locations like Whittaker Ponds. Allowing individuals to have sidewalks and bike lanes allows safe, healthy, and budget-friendly transportation options. First and foremost, when people feel that an activity is safe, they will opt for this in their daily practice. If they recognize the financial savings as well, they will continue this practice. And when they adopt this practice as a routine or scheduled habit, they are directly investing in their own personal health, as well as in the long-term health of their environment and their city. From the perspective of preventative medicine, I am confident that this street reconstruction proposal is a hands-down net positive for our community. On a personal note, in closing, I am a working mother. I have three children who walk and ride their bikes in northeast Portland. Their daily commute includes destination-like schools, local parks, homes of friends, stores, and restaurants. Like most moms, I always worry a little about their safety, especially while I'm away from home working. But I, I feel comfort in knowing that my neighborhood has clear sidewalks, designated bike lanes, speed bumps, and stop signs. I value my neighborhood and my city because my city values the safety of my children. I know my city is investing in the long-term health and security of my children, and this inspires me to invest in my city as well in return. It is most certainly a win-win situation. However, despite this awareness, I know that not all neighborhoods in our city have these same benefits on their streets for their children. Specifically, I cannot imagine allowing my children or even my husband to walk or ride or bike on this section of 47th Avenue under the present conditions. My family has been to Whittaker Ponds, and presently, our most reasonable mode of access to this wonderful park would be to drive, primarily due to the real safety risks that this street currently poses for pedestrians and bikers. Therefore, in conclusion, as a mother and a physician, I urge you to be equitable to other neighborhoods and families like those near 47th Avenue, who may not be as fortunate as mine. Provide them with safe and healthy options for transportation with sidewalks and bike lanes. Join Kaiser Permanente with this effort to promote real change in the health of our citizens. Please allow them to go out and thrive in these most basic ways so we can all thrive together in this very special city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
And the next three, please. Rebecca Hamilton, Rich Gunderson, and Lauren Young.
Good morning. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Rebecca Hamilton. I'm here on behalf of the Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the City of Portland. And I think it would be hard to state any better than the mothers, business owners, neighbors, and health professionals that have already testified in support of this project for its safety benefits. Obviously, we're moving children walking from the fog line of a freight-heavy street to a protected sidewalk. Pedestrian Advisory Committee is obviously very strongly in support of that. What we would like to emphasize is our strong support for the Interbureau Collaboration and Strategic Funding Plan that has gone into making this project come together. This kind of collaboration is a means of funding small projects that have a big impact on neighborhood livability and safety, yet we have a lot of trouble funding projects of this size. They don't usually show up in our big, exciting project lists for state, metro, active transportation funds. So we'd really like to applaud Mr. Abbey and his team for their approach, and we would specifically like to encourage you to ask the bureau to pursue more of these opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Rich.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Rich Gunderson. I'm here today representing Colley Association of Neighbors, and you probably know me more as a Colley park and recreation guy. And I'm here today to support the LID. I think it is a fantastic deal for the, the property owners, number one. But number two, I think, is just a fantastic opportunity to improve the entryway to a great park in Whittaker Ponds and provide, number, most important thing, I think, is it provides safe access from the neighborhood to the park in, in the form of the sidewalks and the bikeways. So I hope that you will support this LID.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Laura Young. I never know how close to get to this mic.
You're fine.
Sorry. Okay. So I am a East Portland native, and I've been a resident of Colley for 12 years and a transportation advocate for most of those years. And, and on a personal note, I have actually witnessed five people hit by cars in my neighborhood in the last 12 years, so pedestrian safety is, is ever on my mind. That being said, this, this collaboration on this LID, it checks so many boxes for the neighborhood. It's access to jobs, access to parks, safe pedestrian access, safe bicycle access. Whittaker Ponds is a destination for people in the city, and it brings people into the community and drives economic benefits in the community as well. So I just wanted to show my support for the project, and also the collaboration is extraordinary. It is not creating an unreasonable burden for property owners, and Mr. Abbey's outreach in the community has been exemplary, and it's definitely fully supported in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. That's it. Anyone else want to speak on this item? Heard of questions from council? If not, then let's please take a vote on the resolution.
So they often say that the city bureaus exist in silos, and that the council members don't talk to each other, and that we don't partner to get projects done. Well, this one just shows that actually that's not true. And I am very proud of Parks, Environmental Services, and Transportation for working together, and for all of our staff, as well as my colleagues, Commissioner Novick and Commissioner Fish. Particularly proud that Parks is putting over $1 million in system development charges into this project. These are fees paid by developers for adding capacity where they're adding new homes and businesses, and it's an entirely appropriate way of assisting funding this entry project improvement. I also appreciate the partnership with Metro, as was mentioned, over 400,000 coming from a Metro grant, and our staff in Parks are just fantastic at looking in every foundation and grant and private philanthropy opportunity we can to leverage these kinds of projects. It will help mitigate a significant infrastructure gap in a wonderful community, which is currently underserved with infrastructure. Thank you especially to Park staff, Allison Rouse, Lauren McGuire, and Kier Selly, to Transportation, Andrew Abbey, for leading this whole project. And I'm, I'm just very pleased that we are able to get this done. It should be a model for what we should do in the rest of the city, where environmental services and transportation and Parks all have significant investment in getting things done and improving areas of our city that have been lacking despite its residents being wonderful people who deserve the best. Aye.
One of the things that Commissioner Novick declared, I should say, early in his tenure as Commissioner in charge of PBOT, was that he wanted PBOT and the Bureau of Enviro, excuse me, Bureau of Environmental Services to strengthen their partnership. And that's easier said than done. And it's a complicated relationship that actually works quite well. But this is an example of where we take it to the next phase, where we get to collaborate, where we get to innovate, and where the community wins. So first, I want to thank Steve for his perseverance in bringing this day possible, making this day possible. I want to just acknowledge what all the community members said about Andrew Abbey. I mean, every once in a while, we take for granted the good work he does, but it's exceptional. And it, it's very meaningful for us to hear community members single him out for the work that he does, because we're very proud of his work. And finally, I just want to thank the community members who came out today to testify in favor of this. Your voices matter, and this is, I think, ultimately a great win for an area of the city that hasn't gotten the investment it deserves. So today, I'm very proud to cast my vote, aye.
Well, this is a great example of several city bureaus working together for a fantastic outcome. This is a really necessary improvements to Northeast 47th that will result in a lot more pedestrian safety, vehicle safety, bicycle safety, and treatment, good treatment of stormwater, too, and access to Whittaker Ponds. Aye.
One of the advantages of voting almost last is that you have lots of times to come up with stuff to say, but one of the disadvantages is that sometimes it's already been said. I don't know if I can add much to what my colleagues have said. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Allison. Thanks to all the community members who came here today. And I have to say, it's really wonderful when a whole bunch of people come out to talk about something that is not controversial, that people come out to talk just to say, "This is great." I do want to say that it's discouraging to hear that people in the community have been asking for this project for 20 years. On the other hand, it's kind of inspiring that the fact that you've been waiting for something for 19 years doesn't mean that it won't happen. So I think part of the lesson of this project, to borrow a line from the great movie Galaxy Quest, is never give up, never surrender. Aye.
Well, great project, great work. And I just was really struck by the testimony, not only that it is supportive, and thank you all for being here to support the project, but how coherent it was among you. I mean, maybe you planned this all out in terms of those of you who testified, but just the, the fact that this project works on so many levels and accomplishes so many objectives. It's about safety, it's about livability, it's about access to nature, it's about connecting neighborhoods to jobs. And, and I thought your testimony was eloquent in putting all those things together and showing the extraordinary value of this project. All LIDs that build streets that we don't have yet, or fix streets that are not what they should be, are a positive thing for the city. But the quality of the, the work here in terms of reaching all those objectives in one project is pretty extraordinary. So Andrew, I hope you're not too embarrassed by all the praise, but you deserve it. And, and this is another great case of the bureaus working effectively together. Sentimental favorite for me as well, because I and the Portland Development Commissioner are working really hard to bring the United States Postal Service to this neighborhood, and we're going to have to make sure there's a safe and adequate transportation system in order to make that a success for everyone, and this is certainly a big piece of that. So bravo on all counts. Aye. Thank you. Okay, let's move to our other time certain, which is 194.
194. Accept the report announcing the 2016 National Forum for Black Public Administrators Conference to be held in Portland, April 13th through the 17th.
Commissioner Saltzman.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my great pleasure to bring forward some people who are going to talk about a conference that will be coming to Portland in the middle of April that we're very fortunate to have, and that is the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. And with us is Leslie Goodlow, who is a member of the Board of the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, and also works in our Housing Bureau. Don't want to forget that. And she's also the conference chairperson for the national conference. I think all of you know that these conferences are very sought after by cities across the country, and so Portland is very fortunate to have landed this one again. I think we, we had it once before. So we're very fortunate that people want to come back to Portland and see it again. And I want to turn it over to Leslie Goodlow to give us an overview of the conference.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Mayor Hales, I'm Leslie Goodlow. I work for the Portland Housing Bureau, and I am the Chair of the Forum 2016. And with me is Mark Lewis, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Mark Lewis, President of the Local Chapter here in Portland, Oregon for the National Forum for Black Public Administrators, as well as a county worker for the Health Department.
So this morning, I just want to talk to you a little bit about the National Forum and what this is going to do for Portland. So the National Forum for Black Public Administrators is an organization that was developed to assist Black Black administrators, Black public service employees in development and leadership. Give folks an opportunity to network, give people an opportunity to learn about what's going on in other parts of the country. We have over 1,000 members from across the country and chapters, 36 chapters, across the country. So why this is important, and I'm just going to tell you a little bit about myself. I became manager in Multnomah County in 1995. I was 30 years old, had never supervised anything but students, and was looking for opportunities for training and development. And as a young Black woman in Portland, I graduated from Portland State. I was one of five Black graduates in my class. There aren't a lot of opportunities for Black people to get training and development where there are other people that look like them in the room. Most of the trainings I've attended on the West Coast, I'm one of maybe one or two people that look like me. I generally have to go east of the Rockies to get training. I've been to Atlanta, I've been to DC a bunch of times, and I've been fortunate enough that I've worked places that supported me being able to travel. This is a great opportunity for people on the West Coast, and particularly in Portland, Oregon, and Washington, to be able to attend a training of this caliber and not have to pay for travel costs. We have significant opportunities for networking, as there will be people from across the country attending. The workshops that will be available this year, the first track is Leading for Success, and I guess I could run through my slides. That might help. Leading for Success, and that's around talent development, leadership development. As you can see, we have, there are several different trainings there. That's not all of them, those are the ones that I chose, particularly because we have staff from the county, the city, that are going to participate on a couple of those trainings. The Governing for Equity, Dante James will be back, and he will be one of the panelists. Ben Duncan from the county will be one of the panelists, and then Bishop Holt will be the moderator, as well as a person from Minnesota that will participate on that panel. Track Two, Excellence Through the Use of Technology and Innovation. We have folks from other city organizations, folks from the city, not Portland, the city of Portland, that are participating. So we have lots of opportunities, and we're still looking to fill some workshop slots, particularly in transportation, Commissioner Novick. So I may put a call to you to say, "Hey, is there anybody from Transportation that'd be interested in participating in the workshop on moving people around?" Additionally, Maxine Fitzpatrick is a presenter on the housing, transitioning neighborhoods and housing affordability.
I love your panel on, "When it rains, it pours," stormwater management, particularly since Oregon set an all-time record in December for rainfall. So it's very timely.
Yes, it is. So some of the scheduled highlights. We have a public policy forum on Thursday, the 14th. We have two mayors that are confirmed for that, Mayor William Bell from Birmingham, Alabama, and Mayor Michael Hancock from Denver, Colorado. And then Andre Perry, I don't know if any of you have heard of him. He writes for The Washington Post, and he will be the moderator for that forum. We have the corporate luncheon scheduled, and the Innovation Center. We will be bringing in companies to do demonstrations of projects or products. From the police, the camera, the vests with the cameras, they're bringing somebody in to do that. Someone to bring in some HR technology on how to track employees and things such as that. So that'll be a great opportunity for folks to come and see some demonstrations of new innovations across the country. And then Thursday night, we will be, our local chapter will be hosting an event here, and we're actually having it here at City Hall. We chose City Hall because it is a historic building. We think it has a lot of character, and it will give folks an opportunity to see where we do business, and people are pretty excited about it. On Friday morning, we have our Hall of Fame breakfast, and Sophia Nelson, who is, I guess she's a Republican analyst, I don't know her, but apparently she's somebody who talks about politics, will be the keynote speaker. We have a fair housing tour that we will have folks going around to places where we have used, or to demonstrate things that have happened here in Portland around fair housing. So we currently have 19 people. Some housing authority folks from across the country signed up for that, so we're pretty excited. And then on Saturday, we have a community service project that we're doing jointly with the Urban League in their community garden. We have students from SEI and from our Black Male Achievement Program that are going to be participating with that project. And we have 25 people signed up for that from the conference. There's an elected officials roundtable, graduation for our Executive Leadership Institute, and then Saturday night is the Marks of Excellence Gala. And then Bishop Holt will be leading the ecumenical service on Sunday morning. So economic impact, the forum attracts as many as 1,000 people to the conference. We currently have 1,300 room nights booked at Hilton around the corner. It's about $1.1 million of direct spending, and we have tours scheduled for Woodburn, we have a wine country tour, and a golf tournament, so that will bring in more funding. Folks are very excited about coming to Portland to shop, because there's no tax, no sales tax. And then the overall economic impact for the conference is about $3 million. So we're really excited. I know Travel Portland's very excited. They worked for several years, applied for the RFP several times before they were finally awarded it this year, the last time the conference was here in 2003. And people still talk about what a wonderful time they had when they were in Portland, and they're very excited to come back. So the community impact, again, this is opportunity for leadership development and training for both current and future leaders, opportunities for sharing best practices, supporting our sustainable efforts through the Community Garden Project, public-private partnerships, and for us to be able to showcase Portland and the metro area as a tourist destination for people that have never been here. That, you know, folks are like, "Oregon? Who wants to go to Oregon? What's out in Oregon?" So I think this is a great opportunity for us to show what we have here, what a beautiful city we have. And before I go on, I need to show you, how do I get this back up? So this is a video that Travel Portland put together that we showed in Tampa last April that I wanted to show. It's about two minutes.
Nice, very good. Yeah, that's great. Wow.
I have a few more slides. So I just want to give a few acknowledgements to folks. First, Commissioner Saltzman and County Commissioner Loretta Smith, who both signed off on our fundraising letter. The committee chairs, we have folks from the city, from the county, from state, PDC, all working on committees. And Travel Portland, who has supported us in getting the RFP, who put together the video, and they are helping to fund one of the luncheons at the convention center. So how can council help? First and foremost, Mayor Hales, I need a letter of support from you for the program.
Got it.
I would ask that Commissioners encourage their bureaus to support the conference by allowing their staff to attend. We are still looking for volunteers, and volunteers, if they give 10 hours, can attend the conference at a lower rate of $495. We have, and then financial support. We had a goal of $200,000 that we were trying to raise. We restructured the budget to about $120K, but I'm still short of that goal. And I do appreciate Tiffany Pinson's work, and we're better together efforts to get us a $10,000 sponsorship from the city. In light of the equitable mission and goals in the city, the timing of this event gives us a rare opportunity to demonstrate our investment. We need to secure about another $50,000, and I'd like your help. So that could be additional funds if other bureaus have money, relationships with other jurisdictions, organizations, or businesses that you think would be supportive of this effort, who could help us reach our goal, and that you'd be willing either to give a call or shoot an email and say, "Hey, Leslie's going to give you a call." My deadline for funding is March 18th. And in closing, I love Portland. This means, sorry. This means a lot to me. I want the conference to cast Portland in the best possible light. And I know you do, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you both.
Did you want to add anything, Mr. Wilson?
Want to add anything, too?
I have a question. Did the Visitor Development Fund provide a grant to support bringing the conference here?
At Travel Portland?
Yes.
Yes, they are providing, they worked with TriMet, we're getting passes for all the conference participants. They are giving us some VIP transfers for folks from the airport, and then they are covering the cost of one of the luncheons.
But did you apply for a grant from the Visitor Development Fund?
Yes, that went to the national office.
Okay.
For to cover the costs over at the convention center.
Okay. I seem to remember that Commissioner Saltzman and I both serve on that board, and we, along with Commissioner Smith, were enthusiastic supporters of it. So thank you very much for all of your work on it. It's exciting to see it come here.
Leslie, you can count on me to help down the home stretch. And I just want to tell you that we're so excited about this, that we're behind a table at the Hall of Fame breakfast, and we're bringing senior leaders from the two utilities. And one of the things about this event that we're very excited about is we're about to go out for two national searches for deputy directors of both utilities. We can't think of a better way to start building and cementing relationships than to talk to administrators that you're bringing to Portland. So we're very grateful.
So we will have, and I'll let Anna know, that we will have opportunity for a table talk for folks to do recruiting. I know we've got fire chief and PDC and some other things that we, other high-level positions that we're recruiting for, so this will be a great opportunity for that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, we need a motion to accept the report.
Move to accept the report.
Second. Further discussion, roll call.
Well, this is really terrific, both to showcase what Portland can do to bring more folks here, and to highlight, I appreciate the economic impact report that was given today, showing that these conventions and conferences do benefit our total economy, and that's why a portion of taxes from hotel and motel stays goes into continuing to encourage conferences to locate here via the Visitor Development Fund at Travel Portland. And so I'm very proud to have served on that board for the seven years, and I hope I continue to get assigned to it, because it's the only eight o'clock meeting that I enjoy going to. Thank you very much to Leslie and your entire team for all the work. It's a huge undertaking to bring a national conference here, and we're very proud of you. Aye.
I had the honor of working with Leslie when I was Commissioner in Charge of the Housing Bureau, and she makes a difference every day. And we know that she also is a tireless supporter and advocate for the Rose Festival and for lots of good causes in our community. And this is another great thing for Portland. So Leslie, thank you for your presentation. Dan, thank you for supporting this effort, and we'd like to know how we can do more. Aye.
Well, I also want to thank Leslie Goodlow for her hard work in helping to bring this conference to Portland, and for her continued service on the Board of the National Forum for Black Public Administrators. And also to Travel Portland for their, the great video they produced, and I know the great sponsorships they're doing. And I know as a city, we're going to help make this conference a rousing success. So thank you all. Aye.
Leslie, thank you very much for that presentation. I want you to know that I've already emailed Director Leah Tritt to ask her who from PBOT could participate in the conference. Also want you to know that although, as you may know, the mayor has been an advocate for a sales tax, I will do my best to make sure that we don't enact one until after April 17.
Thank you.
Aye.
Not much danger of that. Thank you for a great presentation, and I'm looking forward to helping down the stretch here to help you make it a success, because I know you, and all of you that have worked on this, have worked hard to make it happen. It seems to me this is complimentary in both senses of the word to what we're doing here. It's a compliment to the city of Portland that they're coming back, and it's a compliment to our efforts to be a more equitable community, to have a workforce and key administrators that reflect the diversity of our city. And it will be an opportunity specifically, because we have the PDC director recruitment underway, and maybe by then, the fire chief recruitment, for us to try out our Charles Jordan standard for making sure that there is an African-American candidate considered when we get to finalists for these positions. So this is a chance for us to show off in the sense of, we love our city and we want to share it and share ideas. We also have a chance for us to learn from our professional colleagues around the country, and a chance for us to spread a wide net for recruiting for the leadership of our city. So it's a great opportunity, let's make the most of it. Thank you so much. Aye. Okay, let's move on to our regular agenda, please. Item 205.
205, Proclaim March 2016 to be Women's History Month in Portland.
So we have some women leaders here to talk about this proclamation, Megan Fertal and Marietta Redding and Janice McDonald, I think, are all going to be here. Yes, you are. I will read the proclamation and then turn it over to you. It says this, "Whereas residents of this region know that its greatness and success is a direct result of all residents, regardless of gender, making creative, intelligent, and revolutionary contributions to society. And whereas women have been historically underrepresented, yet have contributed and continue to contribute important roles internationally, nationally, regionally, and locally in furthering knowledge and promoting positive social change. And whereas to foster the next generation of women, the city of Portland seeks to encourage and support professional, educational, and social opportunities for women in order to ensure that opportunities that may not have existed in the past are available in the present and into the future. And whereas Women's History Month is a time for all Portlanders to remember the stories and teachings of the many women who made and continue to make improvements for the livability of the city, region, and world. And whereas during Women's History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on past victories and struggles of women to create a society where our daughters can reach their full potential, unobstructed by gender. And whereas the National Women's History Month 2016... And whereas the National Women's History Month 2016 theme is working to form a more perfect union honoring women in public service and government, which is especially fitting to honor all the women in the city of Portland who have dramatically influenced public policy in the building of valuable institutions and organizations. Now therefore, I Charlie Hales, Mayor of the City of Portland, Oregon, the City of Rose, is to hereby proclaim March 1 to March 31st of 2016 to be Women's History Month in Portland, and encourage all residents to observe this month." So, thank you for your leadership, and I'll turn it over to the three of you.
Well, good morning, Mayor Hales, Commissioners. My name is Megan Fertal. I am an employee with the Bureau of Revenue and Financial Services in the Revenue Division. And first and foremost, I want to express my sincere gratitude to each one of you for this proclamation, and to celebrate March as Women's History Month. It's going to be great. So as a 28-year-old woman, it's surely a freedom and a real distinction for me to be able to experience this, you know, sitting here in front of the city council. It's not, you know, it's an experience that not many get to have. It means a tremendous anon to me that I get to sit here as the Chair of the City of Portland's Women's Empowerment Affinity Group, or WE. So before I begin, I'd like to thank the council for proclaiming and celebrating February as Black History Month. The City African-American Network, specifically their Director Sunny Benjumbo, put together some fantastic events this last month. And it was a real pleasure seeing you on Monday at the Soul Food Lunch. It was delicious, to say the least. So over this last year, both the City African-American Network and Women's Empowerment have gone through a true revival. For Women's Empowerment, after a great dialogue with group members, we decided to rename our group to reinvigorate and better showcase who we are. This landed us on the two most important things, women and empowerment. And so, our new name was formed, Women's Empowerment, WE. This inclusive and direct message reflects our mission, which is to empower and inspire women within the city of Portland by providing opportunities to expand their professional network, exchange ideas and advice, advance their careers through mentoring and education, and meet influential women who have achieved success. So, Women's History Month, we have such a great theme, as you said, which is to honor women in public service and government. We really couldn't have asked for a better theme this year. It really is fitting for who we are here. So the members of WE have organized a variety of events this month, ranging from our kickoff breakfast, which was enjoyed here this morning at City Hall, and to speaker panels that we have scheduled. We'll have clothing swaps and a storytelling event. We'll have lunch and policy talks with the Human Resources Director, Anna Canwit, and Commissioner Fritz. Additionally, in partnership with PDx City Mamas, another affinity group here in the city, which is awesome, we will have social events and important childcare discussions. One event I really would like to highlight and feature is the Wonder Woman Awards. This will be our sixth annual event. It is a nomination-based event for which it celebrates women, mentors, leaders, and exceptional coworkers that we all admire. For me personally, this event is incredibly significant and special. I think it's incredibly important to say, "Thank you." It's something for us to recognize city women for their hard work, their dedication, and their talent. The nominated women will be honored on Thursday, March 31st, from noon to 1:00 in the Portland Building, second-floor auditorium. So I hope to see you all, and especially at that event. That one's going to be pretty amazing. Now, on to my other women champions.
Good morning, Mayor Hales, and members of the commission. My name is Marvita Redding, and I am the Group Manager for Pollution Prevention Services for the Bureau of Environmental Services. And I'm pleased to be here with you this morning. I have worked with a number of you over time, and as Megan was saying, it was a pleasure to be able to be at council. I've spent time at council, and sometimes it's a pleasure, and sometimes not so much. But today, it is a pleasure to be here. I was asked to provide a few thoughts on my perspective on being a woman, particularly a minority woman in government service over the years. I came to Oregon to work for the federal government and was recruited via Washington DC to come out and work for the US Department of Agriculture General Counsel's Office. I did that for five years, and then, seeing the error of my ways, I decided to go into something different than the practice of law. But I became an environmental manager, obviously with a lot of the background in regulatory affairs, and I worked for the State Department of Agriculture Natural Resources. So my education and background here in this state had been in very non-traditional areas. Ultimately, I came to the city of Portland as the environmental manager, and environmental compliance manager for the Bureau of Environmental Services. I thought I'd reflect a little bit on my experience when I first came to the organization. I recall sitting in a meeting one day with a group of my peers. There's five or six others, five or six other males at that time. And there had been an initiative that had been launched by city council about hiring and affirmative action. And so, something had been sent out, and everyone had been reading the emails and talking about it. And so the discussion was about recruitment and how we were going to deal with this issue. So there was a lot of consternation about how in the world were we going to be able to fill these requirements, these responsibilities, et cetera. So the conversation probably went on for about four or five minutes, until finally, one of my peers said, "Well, I guess we're going to have to do it. We're going to have to hire women and minorities. I'd hate to think that we just have to go out and hire just anyone." There was a moment of silence. I had been listening to this for a time. And so, please be assured that I was able to address that issue in that particular meeting. Fast-forwarding to the present, it's interesting that we are still looking at these issues in the same way. We've made progress, that is true. But there is still much more to do. One of the things, and they'll be talking about the statistics here in a few minutes, is being able to bring folks into the organizations and have them rise through the organization. We need to be looking at these issues in a number of different ways. First of all, looking at our young people, which I'm particularly interested in. I was here last week when there were the presentations, and was quite heartened by those, to see young people being helped to be brought forward to learn about jobs and careers, and that's something that I'm very personally committed to. We need to do that. We need to be looking at things, just as we were just discussing in the previous item, for recruitments at the top, and how we do that in an effective and consistent way. And so I have to be optimistic, because I'm generally an optimistic person. I want to thank all of you for your support of initiatives in the past, and particularly in initiatives in the future that support women and minorities in the important work of government. I've been reflecting just recently about the importance of government service. I think sometimes many of us, particularly those of us who have been at it for some period of time, can be a little cavalier about it. And I remember talking to someone not too long ago who talked about the importance of government service and the fact that we need to have high-quality people here, and it is a real honor to work for government. As you travel around the world, as I have many times, you go to certain countries, and people very proudly say, "My son or my daughter works for the government." And it is very, very important to the formation of those particular countries, and they're proud that their children are there. Sometimes we don't look at it that way in this country. I think we should do it more and more, because, as you know, we have so many high-quality men and women who do work for the government and for the city of Portland. And I'm very pleased to be a City of Portland employee for 25 years. And so, I was thinking, maybe I shouldn't tell you that, but I have it. But it, you know, time passes very, very quickly when your work that you enjoy and love, and you're around people that you enjoy working with. Thank you for the opportunity to appear today.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Janice McDonald. Thank you for having us here today. I work in PBOT, specifically on the Safe Rites to School Program. But here today, I am as the co-chair of DEEP, which is Diverse and Empowered Employees of Portland. Each year, we come together and celebrate Black History Month, Women's History Month, and Hispanic Heritage Month. While this is fun and important, it isn't enough. It isn't enough to only have our attention drawn to these groups 30 days out of 365. It isn't enough to just celebrate their heritages and some successes. I've been asked, sometimes jokingly, sometimes seriously, "When does the white guy get his history month?" While some may think this is funny, I ask, "When will women and people of color be at all tables, making decisions on all levels every day of the year?" Overall, the city of Portland employee makeup is 77% white, 7% black African-American, and 5% Hispanic Latino, with a total of the workforce being 58% male. For managers and supervisors, those numbers are 84% white, 5% black African-American, and 4% Hispanic Latino, with a total of the managers and supervisors being 64% male. For the past year, a few dedicated city employees involved in DEEP and the affinity groups, City African-American Network, Unidos Latinos Americanos, and Women's Empowerment have been designing a leadership development program specifically for women and people of color. With the strong support of Office of Equity and Human Rights Director Dante James and Joe Wall, plus $10,000 from their budget, it is with great honor that I announce that the Leadership Development Pilot Program was kicked off yesterday. Briefly, the program will have a mentorship aspect and specific trainings that will provide participants with practical tools they can use to enhance their work product, as well as learn skills to overcome the gender and racial biases that they may face on a day-to-day basis. The goals of the program are important. Support and develop the skills of current city employees, retain and promote those employees, grow our leadership in the affinity groups, and change our workforce to better reflect the demographics of our city. We want to move those percentages of women and people of color in management and supervisory positions to a higher level. It is not only good for morale, but it makes the work of the city does much more enriching and customer service much better. The program will not be successful if participants are not allowed to use a few hours of their workday each month. We ask that you show your support by communicating with your bureau directors and their managers to support the participants in the Leadership Development Pilot Program. Give them a few hours to develop their leadership skills, and in turn, you will have happier, more productive employees. I would like to thank Debbie Castleton from BES, Sunny Benjumbo from OMF, Cynthia Castro from Parks, Christina Neves from Commissioner Fritz's office, and Carlos Hernandez from PBOT, for joining me in creating the DEEP Leadership Development Program. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. I think that council members would love to take a photo with the three of you as leaders. I see Debbie's packing a camera. Hey, we can pull that off.
Is there any more?
Yeah, I'll take pictures. I have plenty of pictures of that.
On camera.
Yep.
You win the history month.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Very much, we appreciate it.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Holly, just as a little postscript to that presentation, I really appreciate the note that we still have a ways to go. And we intentionally, when we set up the Office of Equity and Human Rights, we focused to start with on race and disability, and I continue to support that. And we still, the statistics show that we have a long way to go. So recently, I met with delegates from the United Nations Convention to Eliminate All Forms of Discrimination Against Women, which is known as SEDOL. There were some international representatives who came to interview me and others. The Convention to Eliminate All Forms of Discrimination Against Women was signed by President Jimmy Carter in 1980. Of the 194 United Nations member nations, 187 have ratified SEDOL. The United States stands with Iran, Somalia, South Sudan, Sudan, Tonga, and Palau in refusing to ratify this treaty. It remains on the Senate, in the Senate Committee on Foreign Relations. The Senate has held hearings on SEDOL five times in the last 25 years, and has somehow not managed to bring it to a vote on the Senate floor. This is just an example of how we, in the United States, need to live what it says in the Constitution, and live the American dream, and provide opportunities to all people, all genders, all races. And it's something that I'm going to be investigating. Jasmine Wadsmuth, one of my policy advisors, has been looking into what we might be able to do without deflecting attention from the work of the Office of Equity and Human Rights, initially focusing on race and disability, to bring some more attention to the issues of eliminating discrimination against women. So that is pending.
Thank you, thanks very much. We'll suspend the rules for that. That's a good idea. Thank you very much. Thanks for your great presentation. So now we'll move back to our regular agenda and take up item 206.
206. Apply for and accept a grant in the amount of $5,000, and appropriate $2,500 for fiscal year 2015-16 from the Oregon Impact 2016 Pedestrian Safety Enforcement Mini Grant Program for sworn personnel overtime reimbursement.
So Officer Brian Swinney's here to explain this proposal to us.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is a third-year repeat for this particular grant from the Oregon Impact. We accepted it 2013-14, or 14-15, and this will be the third time that we've applied for it, with your permission. What it allows us to do is identify areas in the city where we're having an increase in vehicle crashes relating specifically to the crosswalks and pedestrians. We will pick five locations, organize a mission, usually a four-hour time period around a busy time during the day where there's lots of traffic. And officers will come in on overtime and conduct enforcement at the crosswalk. A lot of the media notifications will be made by the Portland Bureau of Transportation. Sharon White, she's helped us out a lot in the past with this. And I think that about covers it, unless anybody has any questions.
So you coordinate with PBOT, obviously, on figuring out where those particular five locations will be each time.
We do, and it's, we don't know what they are right now. There's several different ways to identify them. We could work all of the intersections in the city and make an impact. So we try and pick the ones where there's a bigger problem.
Other questions?
So we hear a lot, and we're all aware of the challenges with staffing in the police bureau, and the fact that everybody's working a lot of overtime anyway. So certainly, this is a great project, which I've supported in the past. I continue to support it. I'm concerned about officers doing even more when we know that we're stretched to just provide patrol services.
Right, and I'm certainly not the one to answer staffing questions. I can tell you just what I know. I'm assigned to the Traffic Division. A lot of the work that we do is grant-based work, where it's on overtime, so the officers have the ability to say yes or no to it and sign up for it. They don't have to do it if they don't want to. In years past, we've asked for $5,000, and I think last year we were actually awarded the five. We didn't use it. We have so much going on, like you mentioned, with different events during the summertime, and this is kind of when this is organized. Now, till September, we have to spend the money, and we're busy during that period. So the last two years, Oregon Impact hasn't had any issues with us not using the entire amount that we were awarded. I'm going to try and structure it this year a little bit differently, and maybe have a few more of these missions during peak travel times with less officers at each mission. So I might be able to spread it out a little bit better and use more of the funds.
Yeah, I was wondering if there's any opportunity for using any non-sworn staff to assist in these missions. I don't know what they might be able to do, because obviously you have to have somebody in the car turning the lights on and pulling people over. But I think we'd all be very supportive of you looking to partner with other staff, if that's possible.
We do, with PBOT. They help us out quite a bit. Sharon White has helped us as the walker. The decoy, I guess, is the term that we use for her. She's not able to do it this year. It'll probably be a police officer that's in civilian clothes that's walking across the street just because of the danger involved with it at some of these crosswalks, so.
I'll do it.
Yeah, I'll do it too. I've done it in the past.
Seriously.
No, I appreciate that.
We very much appreciate how stretched you are, and if there's any way that any of the staff in our bureaus or ourselves can help with things that don't require a small officer, a sworn officer, please ask.[1787.55]
I appreciate you volunteering to be a decoy, because I’ve done that, Commissioner Novick’s done it, and it adds to the sort of outsized impact of this relatively small grant. If you’ve got a famous or notorious person out there as the decoy, it then brings media attention to the event, which then makes people think, oh, I might be nabbed in that operation. I better be actually following the law.
Well, since I’m doing it all the time without having the police officer standing by to grab somebody, then I would be more, it would actually make me feel safer to be the decoy.
It will be safer.
Part of the grant is media notifications that are made through our office, our PIO’s office, and PBOT makes their own as well. So, and, yeah, whenever we’re out and the lights are on, it usually stops a few hundred people, so.
I’m very good at crossing the line.
Okay, I think you got an eager volunteer for this year.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mayor, I have to ask you to clarify. Which of us do you consider famous and which notorious?
All, all both. Any other questions for Officer Swinney? Thank you very much. Anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, then it’s an emergency ordinance. Let’s take a vote, please.
Thank you for your work. Aye.
Aye.
Salzman?
Thank you. Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Hang up, drive, follow the law. Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, let’s take our last few items on the regular agenda, starting with 207.
Update city travel policy.
Good morning. So what are we going to do here?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I’m Michelle Kirby, City Controller and Manager of the BRFS Accounting Division.
And I’m Betsy Ames, Senior Policy Analyst with OMF.
So we are here today with an update of the city’s accounting administrative rule, FIN 6.13, overnight and out-of-town travel. So first, I’m going to explain the process we went through to come up with this update. Over the years, OMF has received input about the travel policy and the corresponding procedures, including feedback that the requirements were unclear and/or excessively time-consuming. Therefore, accounting and policy staff have researched best practices across the country and prepared draft changes to FIN 613 and the related procedures. In addition, input and advice from council offices, city travel coordinators, travelers, and bureau accounting staff have been used to develop the draft and review in multiple stages. The initial draft was shared through a citywide notice and review period in December and January. In addition, staff made presentations and additional outreach through the city’s accounting advisory committee, the council chiefs of staff, travel coordinators, and a variety of individuals and work groups. All this feedback was used to prepare the final version that we bring to you today. These final documents were shared with interested stakeholders, and last Tuesday, we held a very well-attended information session with the bureau accounting staff and travel coordinators. And now, Betsy is going to describe a couple of the more significant changes in the policy.
So some of the significant changes from the current policy to what is before you today is that we have established a new, more expedited risk-based approval process for both pre-travel and post-travel expenses. For pre-travel, which is when a bureau director or a commissioner in charge is approving the expenditure of city funds and evaluating the purpose of the travel and confirming that it’s appropriate, we’ve removed the requirement for the commissioner in charge to approve all travel expenses across the city and instead established a threshold of if it’s less than $5,000 and the travel is within the U.S. or Canada, the bureau director has that authority. And then, if it’s international or above that threshold, that the commissioner in charge is required to also sign off on that approval. In discussing this with various offices, we’ve been clear that commissioners always retain the ability to set different standards for their own bureaus in terms of wanting to have everything come to them or saying that they want to hear about everything over $2,000 or whatever that might be. For post-travel review of expenses, since this is mostly an administrative and accounting practice to review the documentation, ensure that the amounts that have been spent conform to the amounts that were approved prior to the travel, we’ve removed the requirement that a bureau director or commissioner in charge needs to review that if it’s within a certain threshold. So if someone comes in within 110% of what was pre-approved and there’s rationale for that, a bureau accounting staff or operations manager can be authorized to approve that. If it’s above, more than 10% above what was approved, that needs to have a written justification and explanation and needs to be approved by either the bureau director or the commissioner in charge, depending on the previous approvals. The second change that is significant is changing how we calculate partial day per diem for meals and incidental expenses. Previously, there were complicated calculations based on what time a traveler departed and questions about whether that was when they departed their home or when they arrived at the airport. We have looked to the federal government’s standards where they apply a 75% calculation on the day of departure and the day of return and standardize that across the city. This also allows us to include qualifying day travel as part of the policy. A situation would be where there’s a day-long conference, say in Seattle or Vancouver, B.C., a bureau and the traveler decide that they can leave very early in the morning and come back late at night, and they’re saving the city expenses by not having an overnight stay that was previously required by the current policy. And we can cover that as part of the travel policy. That was something that had come up in feedback over the years. We also have made a change to how the city can purchase airfare. We heard a lot of feedback that there should be an option to pay via Expedia or others using a procurement card. You have to do the comparison of costs, but in addition to having to go through the city travel agent, we’re now offering an opportunity for bureaus to procure, using a procurement card, online through online travel booking services.
Or by themselves? Maybe if you just want to go to Alaska.com, can you do that? Or do you have to go through a travel booking service?
It could be Alaska.com as well. We still expect that there be that comparison of prices to ensure that you’re getting the lowest-cost alternative that meets the business needs.
You can do that by going to all of the airlines yourself rather than specifically using a company to do it.
Yes. And it still needs to be purchased with a procurement card or via direct invoice.
Betsy, in terms of lowest cost, I’m pricing out a trip for May to go see my family in Spain, and I found that the lowest-cost trip takes about two weeks. And I get there, but it’s not quite what I was hoping. And I noticed that, you know, obviously, the more expensive flights are the direct flights. Do we have a preference in our policies about whether it’s the most, cost and direct are often correlated? And how do we slice that? Because we also don’t want employees to waste a lot of time in airports.
I think the wording says meets the business need.
We have specific language that addresses that, because the lowest cost for a bureau includes the cost of the time. So, you know, the lowest cost, the cheapest ticket might be that red-eye flight, but that leaves someone, you know, attending a conference and not being able to think. At least, great. So we do have language, and I am sure I can find it if I had a moment, but the talks about the lowest costs.
In other words, our rules don’t.
Best value for the city.
We don’t penalize people for getting the most direct flight, which sometimes is a little more expensive.
No, no. It might be a little bit more expensive, but it might allow them to work a half-day in the morning before they leave for their trip. So, exactly. And that’s where there’s discretion, and that’s why the bureau directors are reviewing this and saying, yes, it makes sense to spend an extra $50 because we’re getting this extra value by having them here. We very much appreciated all the feedback that we received from the different bureaus. I think almost every bureau had a representative the other day at our meeting. We’ve had good participation, and it was really useful to have them participate. So we think these changes and others included in the update will help streamline the travel process, saving the city time and money while continuing to ensure adequate internal controls and oversight are in place. So do you have any questions?
Colleagues, I strongly object to removing the commissioner in charge out of the approval loop for decisions less than $5,000. I’ve served here for 18 years. I’ve signed off on every travel request in every bureau I’ve overseen, which is some 10 or 11 bureaus. It’s not too burdensome. Given the amount of scrutiny, things like travel expenses attract from the media and others, I would request that we remove that provision and put the commissioner in charge required approval for all travel expenses. And I can’t support this otherwise.
Okay. So as I understand your recommendation, we have the discretion of delegating under $5,000. It’s not a required delegation. You’re just giving us the discretion to delegate to a bureau director.
The current policy is that all travel must be approved by the commissioner in charge, and the commissioners have the ability to delegate to their bureau directors or to others within their office or within their bureaus. And my understanding is that a number of you have delegated that authority to your bureau directors. So we’re basically just flipping it to say that the default is the bureau directors unless the commissioner in charge wants to retain that authority.
Commissioner Salzman, I was concerned about that, too, and I was then reassured by staff telling me that I could have different rules for my bureaus.
Right.
And now that I’m here in the council chambers, it does seem maybe, it would be confusing that every time bureaus get reassigned, the rules on travel would change, and they would have to remember to tell our bureaus that. I’m wondering, and I share your concern that $5,000 is a lot of money. I had been thinking of, at the very least, could we add something that requires directors to report semi-annually or something, what they’ve approved? Now that I’m hearing your concern, I’m wondering, is there a number below which you would be okay with? Is it $500 that you’d be okay with the bureau director? Or would you prefer to continue approving all of them?
Well, I think, you know, I guess I’d be okay with a $500 threshold, but, you know, what often happens is you have 20 people going to a conference that costs $500 a pop. Pretty soon, you’re talking real money. And that happens. I mean, I know we send fire folks to conferences, we send housing folks to conferences, so I’d prefer that we keep, you know, if we want a consistent rule, I’d say keep the commissioner in charge in the sign-off loop.
I second that amendment.
And I think that’s the most fiscal responsible way, and it avoids, I think, you know, embarrassing situations as well, because you have another set of eyes and you have another signature on that travel release.
Yeah, I hadn’t focused, oh, you’re second to that. I hadn’t focused on this provision. There are other parts of this that were more important to me. So we have the authority now to delegate that, even though that’s the rule? I mean, it is the rule, but you could say, I give to my bureau directors this authority.
Yes.
So, but the default is the commissioner in charge has to sign?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the discussion.
Colleagues.
Why is this an emergency?
It’s only an emergency because we didn’t want to delay putting it in effect. A lot of bureaus have asked for clarity going forward. It doesn’t need to be an emergency.
But if we were to accept Dan’s view on this, the status quo is each commissioner can still decide to delegate decisions on a case-by-case basis?
Yes.
Further discussion of the amendment?
Colleagues, I agree with Commissioner Salzman that the media sensationalizes the issue of public employee travel, but the sensationalization is generally absurd. No private company of our size would have a rule that the CEO or one of the top five people in management have to sign off on every travel item. I agree that there are times when a number of people go to a conference, the amount seems somewhat large. In fact, Beth Slovic, when she was with the Oregonian, wrote an article that implied that the streets of Portland could be paved with gold if we didn’t send people to rail evolution. But I think that we can address that concern by adopting rules ourselves that if our bureaus are sending people to a conference and the total amount of the cost is more than, say, $15,000, then we have to sign off on it. But with that caveat, I think this proposal is perfectly reasonable.
Okay, well, let’s, let’s.
Betsy, just to, can I just make sure I understand? So you’ve got a number of recommendations here that seem sensible and non-controversial. The question that Commissioner Salzman is raising, at least for today, is whether we stick with the existing policy or we have this new bright line that kind of flips it. And it does seem to me a little bit of six of one, half dozen of the other, since it’s still within the commissioner in charge’s discretion to make the call. Am I right on that?
Yes. I think.
I think so.
Oh.
If I may just speak to that, though, that would be when a bureau was assigned to a new commissioner, the director would then say, what would you like us to do on travel expenses, rather than assuming that they get to approve them all?
Yeah.
We did split up the pre-travel when we’re authorizing how much, authorizing the purpose and the expenditure from the post-travel. So we want to clarify.
I don’t think you’ve heard a concern about the 110% rule.
Well, the post-travel is, yeah.
You know, that 110% could just be that the airlines jacked up the cost of checking your luggage again. So, I mean, I don’t think that causes any concern. Okay, so.
So it would just be the pre-travel?
Yeah.
And we can, if it’s, I’m getting a sense that the council would like to change that back. We can bring back amended language next week.
We can amend it right now, and then you can bring, because it’s going to, then that.
Well, I had conferred with Betsy. To the extent this is an HR policy, we want to be very particular about.
It’s an accounting administrative rule.
Mayor, why don’t we?
To the extent that it’s going into the policy documents and it’s going to govern how people are approving expenditures, my recommendation would be that you have staff go back and revise the policy.
Okay.
Because the amendment right now doesn’t have any specifics to it, and it would be good to have specific language in the policy.
Why don’t we just set it over for a week and ask for language, and we keep the emergency on for, keep that.
Should we vote on the amendment, though, or the intent of the amendment, the direct staff to go back and change it?
Unless it’s a friendly, I mean, unless the sense of the council.
I think it’s a sense of the majority of the council. If we’re not going to take a formal vote on this, that’s fine. I think it’s a sense of the majority of the council that we do want to keep the status quo with respect to the commissioner in charge and that they can still elect to delegate this. So unless there’s any further need to do that formally, let’s do, set this over and have you bring back a revised version next week.
Should we take testimony today? Should we take testimony today?
Yeah, so you want us to speak on this while we have it? Otherwise, you can speak on it next week when it comes back. So set it over for one week.
And any other questions on the policy?
No, thank you for your good work.
Yeah, it’s a good piece of work, so.
Right.
Thank you both very much. We’ll set this over for one week and move on to item 208.
208. Authorize a participating agreement with Invoice Cloud, Inc. to provide online utility and tax payment processing services for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,460,000.
Mr. Fish.
Mayor, Director Stewart was such a hit earlier, we asked him to come back for a second appearance. At a time when we hear about financial data breaches far too often, we’re very pleased that the Water Bureau, that working with the city, were taking the necessary steps to protect customer information. Last summer, the Water Bureau discontinued its auto-pay service in order to give us the time to comply with some new banking requirements. And we understand this was an inconvenience to up to as many as 30,000 customers. We’ve heard from a number of them. We regret the inconvenience, and we’re looking forward to being able to put auto-pay back in play. But I do want to just say that since September, Kathy and her team have been working diligently, literally around the clock, to get these fixes in place and to bring us to this day where we’re asking your support for an invoice cloud agreement. This agreement before the council is a big step towards bringing back auto-pay, as well as a number of other features that our customers have requested. Here to tell us more is Christine Moody, Mike Stewart, and our own Kathy Cook.
Christine Moody, Procurement Services. Thank you for the intro, Commissioner. The Water Bureau’s Utility Customer Service Group is responsible for bill presentment and credit card processing of the city’s water and sewer bill, utility bills. As part of the city’s PCI compliance and remediation activities, the city is transitioning to a new pay.
PCI compliance and remediation activities, the city is transitioning to a new payment gateway provided by the city's contractor, NIC. NIC's technology does not currently meet the Water Bureau's requirements. Therefore, the Water Bureau intends to utilize Invoice Cloud due to their previous work with the developer of the Water Bureau's billing system. As allowed for in City Code 5.33, the city may participate in an interstate cooperative procurement after posting a public notice of intent to use a cooperative contract. This notice was posted on January 22, 2016, and no responses were received. You have before you an ordinance recommending the authorization of a participating agreement with Invoice Cloud for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,460,000. And I will turn this over to Mike Stur, Water Bureau Administrator, to discuss more about these services.
Good morning again. Mike Stur with the Water Bureau. This is an extremely important step in restoring the service that we had to shut off or cut off the functionality because of PCI compliance. Our goal there was to protect our clients' data as best we could. Frankly, Invoice Cloud is the only purveyor that is fully integrated with Cuyinta, our billing system. And I thank Christine and her group for finding a creative way to arrive at this contract. There are a lot of folks to thank in this operation. We weren't the only ones that were impacted, just the ones that were impacted probably, probably the largest as an outcome of PCI compliance. Christine, Scott Snyder, and Kathleen Brennis from Purchasing worked out the contracting arrangements for this. Fred Miller and Ken Rust have been very supportive and provided push whenever we need it to make sure that we all stayed on track. Jeff Baer and Christopher Pedron, from his office, was the project manager for this effort. And Ken Rust and Jennifer Cooperman, Ken from the, is obviously the CFO, and Jennifer runs the Revenue Bureau, were all helpful in making this happen. And last, but certainly not least, is Julie Sherby, who is the Business Solutions Group and the group that actually operates Cuyinta for us. This thing had a huge impact on the Water Bureau, and Kathy and her entire staff and customer service deserve thanks. It made their lives very difficult. Still a little bit more difficult, and Kathy will talk about that. And we don't often do this, but I want to thank four people from the Commissioner's staff. This was so arduous and so intense in the beginning of this that Paige, Asena, Betsy, and Liam became expert at answering our customers' questions, and so we had a few less calls, I think, because of that. And last but not least, I appreciate the forbearance of our customers. Cutting off Auto Pay was a big burden. People didn't have to think about it, and we frankly didn't have to think about it either. Now they had to think about it, and the result is increased call volume. So, now I'd like to turn this over to Kathy Cook, who's our real customer champion here. I doubt you'd find a more customer-oriented person in the city, and she'll tell you a little bit about what Invoice Cloud will do.
I'm Kathy Cook, the customer service champion. With the, with the changes in the PCI requirements, we lost, as we said, some key functionality and convenience for our customers. With Invoice Cloud, we'll be able to restore the Auto Pay program. Over 17% of our customers, or over 32,000 customers, were participating in that. In 2014, 15, we collected nearly $50 million through Auto Pay. Our customers have been very clear with their dissatisfaction of losing this service, and we would certainly like to remedy that for them. We will also be able to restore the ability to take payments over the phone 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year. If you want to make your payment at 2:00 a.m. on Sunday, you can certainly do that with Invoice Cloud. The beauty, as Mike said, of Invoice Cloud is that it's fully integrated with Cuyinta, our billing system. So, the payments that are made through Invoice Cloud will be reflected on the account immediately. So, the customers will see it, staff will see it. There will be no questions there. Through the payment system, through the phone, we took over 58,000 payments and nearly $17 million. And that is the ability to just go straight to the phone without talking to somebody. When we lost the ability to have that, those people needed to call and pay over the phone through a representative, and they were stuck doing that between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00. That's not what they were used to. That's not what they expect from us, and quite frankly, they deserve better. The loss of those two programs have certainly impacted the call center as well. We used to take 1,000 calls a day and answer 80% of our calls within 60 seconds. Now, we are taking more, closer to 1,300 to 1,400 calls a day with a hold time of over five minutes and no ability to pay after hours if that hold time doesn't suit you while you're, during your workday. Having Invoice Cloud will not only restore those two important payment channels, but it'll also improve on what we do now. So, currently, we do have an e-bill program where if you are willing to not have paper sent to you, you can have an electronic bill. What happens there is that if you don't pay off of that electronic bill on time, the first thing you get is a reminder and a fee for being late. With this new program, it has a lot of flexibility built in. So, the customer can decide, hey, I'm getting my e-bill today. I might want a reminder partway through before the bill date. I might want a reminder the day before the bill date. It will give the customers the confidence to know that I don't need that piece of paper in front of me. I will remember. They won't let me be late. Obviously, to go with e-bill is a convenience for the customer. It is a savings for the city, and it's good for the environment. So, right now, we only, with our system, we have now, we only have 9% of our customers signed up for e-bill. We do believe with this more improved, robust system, we will shoot for having a 20% adoption rate. It also offers more payment channels. So, we'll be able to have mobile payments. We'll be able to do text payments on your, on your cell phone or your tablet. It can make flexible payment arrangements, set up automatically. You know, it's just many more features than what we offer now for customer convenience. We're excited to bring back the services that our customers expect and deserve, and we're even more excited that we'll be able to do what we do now a lot better.
Mayor, just, I want to say something about Kathy while she's here, because for all of us who had a chance to work with her, we know what a gem she is and what a hard job she has. And our current system is just not very nimble. And as people know, the mayor and I are very committed to getting as many people on monthly billing as possible for a lot of reasons, including customer convenience, but also sticker shock. A monthly bill is different than getting a quarterly bill. And our system is just not very adaptable. So, she's had to do kind of a workaround. And one of the things that she added was, at the end of every e-bill that you get, your monthly e-bill, it actually concludes with Kathy signing off on the note, and it has an electronic signature. And that's because she's accountable. And if someone gets the bill and has a question, they know there's someone they can call. I got an email recently from someone, Mike and I got one, that was highly critical of Kathy for having signed, put her name on this e-bill. And I know that in government, we're often criticized for things we do or don't do. And for some of us, our thickest file is no good deed goes unpunished. But I thought this one was particularly unfair, and I sent a rather sharp response, because I think it's exactly what Kathy is modeling, is something that I think we should salute and applaud, which is, you know, frontline workers taking personal responsibility, being accountable to their customers. And I actually like getting a bill from Kathy, signed by Kathy, because it's a real person, and I appreciate her work.
We like it when you pay the bill, too.
You've made it a lot easier for me to pay it. So, I just want to thank Kathy publicly for the great work that she does for our city.
Thank you.
I have a question, having done pretty much everything you, what you just described about missing the email and then getting the reminder notice with, et cetera. Will the new system have the same password as the Portland Online's password, or is it a completely new signup for something new?
You will no longer have to be linked to the P O L system. In order to do that, it will have its own single sign-on. But it will be, right now, part of the problem is, in order to link your bill to your P O L account, you have to have this little teeny-tiny number that only comes on the original bill in order to set the process up.
Yeah.
This one will be a much simpler for customers to use, and it'll use something that's meaningful to you instead of a bill number at the top.
And when will this go into effect?
I'd love to be able to answer that. We need to do our initial kickoff meeting for, to create the project plan with Invoice Cloud. So, I would have put it in on September 30th if I could have. So, we will work very quickly to get it done.
Let me answer that.
But are you thinking like six months, a year?
Let me answer it, because, because, you know, we know from these technology things that there's always, there's always unforeseen events. They're working hard to launch this by the summertime.
But that's all the timeframe I wanted to know.
And they'll get extra credit if it can be done before the summertime.
But it's not happening next week, is my, my...
No, no.
And it's not next year, probably.
And there's one, and Commissioner Fritz, there's one other feature that Kathy didn't mention that is going to be particularly, I think, great for older adults. This new system will allow you to send a reminder notice to someone other than yourself. So, an older adult that wants to have an adult child or caretaker get that notice as well can actually sign up so that they get the reminder, but someone in their life also gets the reminder. I'm, in fact, thinking of sending my second reminders to Dan Salzman, because he's very attentive to these things, and I know that he'll walk over and tell me to pay my bill.
I'm happy to sign off on expenses, yes.
So, how will customers be informed of this new functionality?
One of the beauties of the Invoice Cloud itself is that they have their own marketing department that will help us. And then we will also use our own outreach. I personally will be shouting it from the rooftops because I'm so excited to actually get it back. But we will do several things. Bill stuffers, messages on the phone, you know, perhaps direct mail. We haven't put that plan together yet, but any way that we can do it, we're going to get that message out.
But so presumably, whatever way you're currently getting your reminder, there'll be something added onto it to say you can switch to this if you'd like to.
Yeah. And again, we do take over 1,000 calls a day, and that's kind of one of the things that we push when we get there. So...
Yeah, and I also really appreciate your title of customer services champion, which...
That was mine.
Well, I know, you've just been assigned it. Maybe we should have a program that people who are frontline workers who choose to want to be identified as a champion, because, I mean, it'd be awful to be said to be a customer service champion and then turn out to be not all that interesting, right? So, we should perhaps have a, have a program throughout our offices and our bureaus of, if you want to sign up to, yes, this is my thing, and this is what I'm going to do, and I want to be identified that way.
We are very clear that our customers don't get to choose what utilities they go for. So, we make sure that we conduct ourselves in a way that if they could choose, they would still choose us.
Well, I want to thank you, because you are the voice on the front line for the city. And, you know, a lot of times, people might only be calling you, and they wouldn't necessarily call the Commissioner's offices on any other topic. So, thank you for the work that you do.
Other questions or issues to raise with the team here? Thank you all very much. Anyone else want to speak on this item? If not, it's an emergency ordinance. Let's take a vote, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Fish, and your staff, and Christine Moody in Procurement Services, and Kathy Cook and others, for your work on this. My staff tell me that the cost of 1.46 million is 190,000 from the current budget and the remaining 1.26 million in merchant banker fees. So, the transactions cover the cost, and it's not a huge additional cost to ratepayers. And so, I think the nexus between the people who benefit paying for the service is the correct one. Very pleased to support it. Aye.
Fish.
I really appreciate the work of our customer service bureau, and I can tell you that, our team, rather. Kathy has been really upset with the fallout from PCI compliance and has made it very clear that she objected to some of the consequences to our customers of not being able to offer things like Auto Pay. And she'll, she will be working tirelessly to bring this system back online, making sure it works. And we're going to be able to offer things that we've wanted to do for a long time, but technology has gotten in the way. So, thanks to my team and thanks to my colleagues. Aye.
Salzman.
Thank you. Thank you in particular, Kathy, for all the great work you've done for the city and continue to do. Aye.
Noreen.
Thank you, Mike, Christine, and Kathy. Aye.
Hale.
Well, I'm enthusiastic about this, both as a city leader and therefore as somebody who's responsible for how we work with our customers, although it really falls to people that are doing the work to build that relationship. So, thanks for doing a great job of that. But also, as a customer of the Water Bureau, I'm a big fan, not only, as Commissioner Fish noted, of monthly payment, but also Auto Pay. Although, at the risk of oversharing, I have to say that I have an argument with my wife about this subject, like Commissioner Salzman, she sweats the details and is the daughter of an accountant. So, we're going to make this tool available. Not all customers might be ready yet to use it, but I'll keep trying. Aye.
We're born on the same day.
That's right. Yeah, there's something about you two. Watching those dollars. Okay, let's move on to item 209, please.
209, amend the Arts Education and Access Income Tax Code to add a definition for charter schools to include those charter schools where a school district is the fiscal agent and delete the reference to names and addresses of taxpayers not deemed confidential.
Roll call vote, please.
Fritz.
To me, this is about fulfilling our responsibilities and fairness to what the voters approved, that there was a requirement for charter schools that was intended to cover charter schools within the city of Portland. And so, this, the amendment on that corrects the unintended error or the unintended outcome of adding the Ivy School and Southwest Charter School to the schools that will receive services. On the issue of disclosure of income tax records, it has become very clear to me that that's not something that is done in other situations, even for elected officials, that we are not required to provide our income tax statements, and that that should be private. And so, in order to protect the public, I support these amendments. Aye.
Well, I'm glad we had a full discussion about this. And, and Thomas, you began last hearing we had on this apologizing for this being on the consent and not the regular agenda. And I am reminded that in order to make it onto the agenda, a Commissioner has to sign the referral form. And we make judgments based on what we think deserves a fuller hearing or not, and reasonable people can disagree. I think there was a benefit in having this discussion, in part because of the information you shared with the council and the public, which for me was dispositive. So, like Commissioner Fritz, I'm glad we've resolved the charter school issue. On the question of disclosing what other jurisdictions view as confidential information, I think it was important for us to have the conversation. And what was ultimately, for me, determinative is that just about every other level of government that we surveyed treats a taxpayer's name and address as confidential. In fact, I appreciate the last memo that you gave us that pointed out that the federal law, which bars disclosure of the names and addresses of taxpayers, actually came out of the Watergate era and came out of some of the abuses that happened during Nixon, where there was not this firewall between the executive branch and the IRS, and confidential information was handled somewhat casually. I also appreciate that the state of Oregon has a very clear rule that taxpayer names and addresses are not disclosed. And recently, we learned that the Oregon Department of Revenue had, in fact, listed, identified some delinquent accounts, tax accounts. But when we, when we drilled down on that, we learned that those were cases where they'd had to go to the extraordinary step of actually going to court to collect. And as we know, if, if we get to that point where you have to bring a legal proceeding to collect, that is a public record, and that information does become public. I asked you to take a look at other jurisdictions and comparables. We, you gave us information on the Multnomah County ITAX. And something else that was interesting, under Oregon law, in fact, our public utilities are not allowed to disclose the name and address of our customers. That, that is, the name and address combined is exempt from disclosure. I found that very interesting. So, to me, the question of privacy, the reasonable expectation that taxpayers have to privacy is the primary consideration. Then, I think the question is, is there a compelling and countervailing public interest which we have to apply? Well, when the district attorney ruled on this case, he was ruling based on the then-applicable law, which was what we imported from the business side of the ledger, and that's, that's a different body of law. I have heard some suggest that there's some public benefit and interest in shaming delinquent taxpayers. I respectfully disagree. That's not our role. Our job is to collect delinquent accounts, not to shame people. We'll leave that to others. No other level of government is involved in shaming, and I don't think that's an appropriate role for us. So, on balance, and I again want to thank Thomas and Ken McGare for their presentations, I think here the privacy interests of taxpayers trumps the public interest in the disclosure, and I'm going to support this ordinance. Aye.
Salzman.
Well, I fully support amending, making charter schools eligible for arts education revenues. However, as I indicated last week, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the situation. However, as I indicated last week, I'm not comfortable with the situation before us regarding disclosure of names and addresses of those who have paid the arts tax. I'm certainly not comfortable about disclosing addresses, and there's probably a workaround for that. But I do very much believe, you know, that we have a problem here. We have, well, I guess two things that make me uncomfortable. First of all, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that the district attorney ruled this information is public record, and our response is to come back and amend the ordinance. That just doesn't strike me as being the right approach. But secondly, you know, we have a problem here. We are supposed to be collecting upwards of $10 million a year. And by this point, according to the projections we produced in 2012, when this was sent to the voters, we were supposed to have a compliance rate of some 85% to 90% of taxpayers paying this tax. Mr. Lanham, under my questions last week, said right now our compliance rate is 68%. So we have millions and millions of dollars that are going uncollected that are owed to us. And I had a conversation with Ken McGare this week, and he, our city attorney, and he indicated some study, I didn't ask for the source, but said when it comes to small amounts of debt, public debt owed, shaming is effective. You know, it's not effective when somebody owes millions of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars, but when you owe a small amount of debt, the thought that your name may appear in the media or on the radio has a value, a compliance value. And we are leaving a lot of money on the table, and we are, as a result, arts education and many arts organizations are suffering the consequences of that. So I think that there's little harm. As I said, I'm not comfortable with addresses, but we could do names, we could do zip codes. But it's ultimately, you know, it ultimately falls on the media, too. Whoever chooses to disclose the information, if we made it available, it's incumbent upon them to make sure they have the right person in mind before they publish that person on a list of people that haven't paid, in this case, the arts tax. And we're not talking, and I think what makes the difference between income taxes and arts taxes, arts tax is a fairly binary thing. It's, you paid $35 or you didn't. It's not disclosing how much I paid in federal or state income taxes. And as I said, it's pretty binary, and I would be hard pressed to ever recommend, and I know Thomas knows me well, that I have pushed on this before, that we should not be mounting collection efforts against people for $35, $70, $105. I mean, it's not worth it from our point of view, but it also can wreck people's credit histories. So I think the only valuable tool that we can bring to bear to increase the compliance, and I would wager that we could increase the compliance rate from 68% up to 80% by just having a policy of sharing with the media when they ask for the names of those who have paid the, again, the very binary, $35 or not arts tax. So therefore, I vote no.
Novak.
I have to say that I was rather attracted to Commissioner Saltzman's suggestion that we could engage in a level of shaming, and I was thinking that maybe you could have a requirement that we, you know, only disclose the names of people who are severely in arrears. I'm persuaded that there are problems with that, one of which, of course, is that people do not have unique names, and we might wind up inadvertently shaming the wrong person. So I'm going to support this. I realize that will disappoint the Oregonian Editorial Board, but the Oregonian Editorial Board will not be satisfied until every PRS recipient has the number 666 carved in their forehead, so they should really notice that I'm satisfying that. Aye.
Hale.
Well, I want to thank Thomas and his team, as well as our city attorney's office and for continuing to make an imperfect tool better. The voters approved an imperfect mechanism for funding a better arts environment in our city, and you're working hard to make it work, and I appreciate that. So doing the right thing by public charter schools is one more, one more step in that road. And actually, I think I've heard from, since Steve brought up the Oregonian, I think I've heard from precisely one person on the subject of whether we should disclose taxpayers' identities on this subject, and that's the guy that writes editorials for the Oregonian, and it's not our purpose here to provide them with raw material for gotcha stories. So this is the right move when it comes to protecting reasonable taxpayer privacy while continuing to work to make the thing work better. Aye.
210.
210, amend regulations for marijuana retailers and medical dispensaries to prohibit marijuana sales at drive-through or walk-up windows.
Commissioner Fritz.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, it was clear when we adopted the new city code on marijuana licensing requirements that we would be returning to council with improvements on the original framework on a fairly frequent basis, and so we wanted to do it as expeditiously as possible each time something came up. This proposed code change provides clarity on the restriction of marijuana sales outside of a licensed premise, including drive-through and walk-up windows. Teresa Marquetti, the wonderful manager of this program from the Office of Neighborhood Involvement, will explain the need for this change.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. I'm Teresa Marquetti, I'm the Livability Programs Manager for the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. The ordinance that's before you adds language to an existing section of the Marijuana Regulatory Code that addresses outdoor sales of marijuana from temporary structures, satellite locations, and vendor carts. And what it does is explicitly prohibits drive-throughs or walk-up windows. There currently, we're not aware of any, of any medical dispensary in Portland that has drive-throughs or walk-up windows, but there has been expressed interest from some other local jurisdictions in Oregon, some other dispensaries in other local jurisdictions where they are efforting that. It does not comport with, with the intent of the code regarding a secure and enclosed business environment for the sale of marijuana from dispensaries and retailers. And in fact, our recreational, just our recreational retailers are prohibited from this at the state level. It's just that the statute for the medical dispensaries is silent. So because they are currently operating as the recreational market as well as the medical market, we thought it best to provide clarity now before we issue final inspections and begin issuing City of Portland licenses.
Thank you. Questions for Teresa? Thank you very much. Does anyone want to speak on this item? Okay, it's an emergency ordinance, let's vote, please.
Fritz.
Well, thank you to Teresa Marquetti and her team at the Office of Neighborhood Involvement. Their diligence in responding to this rapidly evolving landscape of the marijuana industry is absolutely phenomenal. And I do appreciate the willingness of all of my colleagues on the council to take swift action to amend the regulations in the interest of providing clarity to prospective business owners as well as the community at large. The Office of Neighborhood Involvement staff will be returning to council next week with an updated fee schedule to meet current cost recovery needs based on the type of license applications we're receiving. So this, again, but one in a series of ongoing improvements in our marijuana code. Aye.
Aye.
Saltzman.
Aye.
Novak.
Aye.
Hale.
Two times in a row, we've tuned up a voter approval, approved measure in a common sense way, so thank you, Commissioner Fritz. And I'm hoping, of course, that under our improved comp plan and zoning code, that there will be more places in Portland that are tuned to the pedestrian instead of to the automobile. But while there are still some drive-throughs around, this is not what they're for. Aye. And we are notifying everyone that item 211 that was originally scheduled for this afternoon is being rescheduled. Is there a date yet for that, Commissioner Novak, or is that still open?
There's not.
There's not yet a date, so to be announced later. So we are recessed until 2:00 p.m. tomorrow.
Thank you.
[music]